Thank you. Tonight, I am opening the meeting as we will go into an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30a, Section 21 on September 29, 2025. 6:00 PM, we're going to be moving into room 303 at the Town Office Building. We are going to discuss the following. The Police Brotherhood Union, Mass General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. We are also going to approve the executive session minutes for the following weeks, July 28, 2025, August 11, 2025, and September 8, 2025. At the conclusion of our session, we anticipate that we will be back in this room for as close to 6:30 as possible. We do have a member absent this evening, therefore, we will have to take roll vote, call votes with each session. So, those in favor of moving into executive session, Mr. Tattelbaum?
We have to okay the...
Oh, first, okay.
Right. We have to okay the meeting, the agenda. We have to say, I'll have to say, so moved, and then we vote.
Okay.
Right.
So, you want to move it?
Yes.
Okay, so moved by Stanley Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. Now, all in favor. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
And Mrs. Brooks, yes. We shall return at 6:30.
Bringing now the meeting of September 29, 2025, meeting of the Dartmouth Select Board here in room 304 of the Town Hall. I'd like to begin our meeting with acknowledging that we have one member missing. And so with Mr. McDonnell missing, do a roll call because it's what can we do?
No, it's okay. He's not remote.
He's not remote, so we're going to take our regular vocal.
Vote.
Votes.
Yes.
And I would like us to ask us to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you remain standing and call to mine our service members, both past and present. Thank you. All right, our meeting this evening starts with a hearing. Our meeting is also being recorded, being shown live on DCTV and recorded for later broadcast as well. Tonight, I'd like to open the hearing for Eversource Energy to install one new J O pole with anchor to be labeled 391-5. The pole location is necessary to provide electrical service to 4 Philbrick Street, Dartmouth. So I'd like to, oh, and there she is. Hello.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening, members of the board, Select Board. Jessica Elder, representing Eversource. Eversource is petitioning to install one joint-owned pole. I'll explain that to anybody who doesn't know that it's a pole jointly owned by Eversource in Verizon. We are going from an existing pole on the corner of Slade Road and Philbrick. That pole is numbered 391 over four, right there on the corner, to the proposed pole 391 over five. Should take us approximately a day or two. We will, I'm pretty sure we'd probably need a detail out there, so we'll request one. And the area will be restored to its original condition or better.
I want to thank you for providing us with the map so we can see exactly where that is. Anyone in the audience in favor of the project that would like to speak? Anyone in the audience not in favor of the project that would like to speak?
This has to be a public, a public hearing.
I did.
You did? Public hearing, sorry.
All right, anyone on the board with any questions?
No. motion approved.
Oh, I need to close the hearing, so now I close the hearing, hearing no questions. I close the hearing, and now.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Neil, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Now I'd like to open the hearing for Eversource to install one J O pole with the anchor to be labeled 297-6-5. The pole location is necessary to provide electrical service to 53 Morton Avenue, Dartmouth. Ms. Elder.
Thank you. Again, we are proposing to install a joint-owned pole again. And this is going to be going from an existing pole 297 over seven, which is over towards the other end of Slade. And this is for the customer at 53 Morton Ave. Again, joint-owned pole with the same issues. If a detail is necessary, we will require one. And again, a day or two for the work to be done.
Okay. Again, anyone in the audience to speak in favor of this project? Anyone in the audience here to speak out against the project? Seeing none, any questions on the board?
Motion to approve.
I'd like to close the hearing.
Sorry.
That's all right. And now, motion to approve, Stanley?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes, dear.
This board leaves no stone unturned. We'll look at how we placed our telephone poles and how we fund our schools all in one meeting.
Yes, busy, busy, busy.
Of equal importance.
All right, so I would like to welcome members of the school committee as member, as well as members of the Dartmouth Public Schools Administration Team to meet with us tonight. I, along with Mr. Tattlebaum, had been asked to be a part of the strategic planning group. And we met with you for overtime over the course of the last year. And we're very proud of the end result, the strategic plan. We have not had a chance to sit down as a board to see your strategic plan. So I welcome you tonight to educate us on what it looks like to create a comprehensive strategic plan for Dartmouth Public Schools. So welcome.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to open our meeting.
Oh, sorry.
Of the school committee joint with the Select Board. And if I can just get a roll call from Ms. McDonald.
John News?
Yep.
Kathleen Namroth?
Yeah.
Oliver?
Yeah.
Mayor Darrell?
Yeah.
Miss Call?
Here. We're good.
Okay.
This meeting is being recorded, as mentioned earlier, for rebroadcast on DCTV and later to be streamed at your leisure on the YouTube channel. So my understanding is that we want to see how our goals align. And I just want to say that yes, Dr. Sabina McGuire is going to give you an overview of our strategic plan. But in terms of our alignment of goals, it's right there in our mission, which we are committed to cultivating a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment that empowers all students to become compassionate, informed, and engaged members of their local and global communities. And I will add that we, as the school committee, strive to run a financially responsible, tight school department with respect to the taxpayers' money. Dr. Sabina McGuire.
On behalf of the taxpayers, we thank you.
Do you want me to just jump into the strategic plan?
Sure. Please.
So, I mean, I never can miss an opportunity to talk about the Dartmouth Public Schools strategic plan. So thank you for letting me hold you hostage for a little while this evening. But it is important for us to have opportunities to continue to publicly discuss what's in our strategic plan. Because one of our commitments here in town and to our school department and to our school community and to the Dartmouth community is that our strategic plan truly becomes or is something that we're living and that there are clear goals and that we have clear priorities and that we have a process for which we can determine our progress toward meeting those goals. So as Ms. Brooks already mentioned, we did strive to have a broad cross-section of folks to serve on the district strategic planning team. And it was really important to us that we had members of the Select Board, that we had a member, members of the Finance Committee, that we had family members who had children in our schools, that we had teachers, that we had ESPs, that we had central office folks, that we had school leaders. So you can see, this truly is a comprehensive list of folks that served on this district strategic planning team. And they weren't the only ones who had voice in the planning of our district strategic plan. And one of the things that we really centered our work around is what is our why? And coming into Dartmouth as then a new superintendent, it was clear to me that there had already been a considerable amount of work that had been done by folks in the district. And it was really important to honor that work because from what I could see, there was community input into developing what we call the Portrait of a Learner and to honor the competencies that people in the community had already identified as being important in terms of thinking about what a Dartmouth Public Schools student should possess in terms of the competencies that we as a school district really look to support in developing in our students. And one thing that I really think was important here in Dartmouth, and I appreciate that the people leading this work recognized that you probably, maybe you have heard that there was a state, there were quite a few communities across the state that were focused on the portrait of a graduate. And what I really think was important here in Dartmouth, that it was a focus on the portrait of a learner. And really, the work that went on in determining sort of the competencies by grade level from pre-K right up to grade 12 was really quite impressive. And there is a detailed document that does give you real insight into what we're focused on here in Dartmouth. And what you'll also see in that document is how well-aligned those competencies are to what the state standards are. So it was, again, a comprehensive process that started not, you know, not, there was a Dart, there was a previous Dartmouth strategic plan in place. And as you all know, COVID definitely disrupted some of the work that had been happening in the community. And it kind of pushed the district in a little bit of a different direction. But when I came in as, again, a new superintendent just two and a half short years ago, it was really a prime time to bring the community together to focus on where we needed to go next. And again, you see the number of people that contributed to this planning process. And we're really proud, if you see in this last box, that the strategic plan is implemented now. So it's not just something that we were thinking about in the work that went into drafting it, but the real work is in the implementation and the monitoring of the work that is happening as a result of having a comprehensive plan that has clear goals. The informing of the strategic plan, as I mentioned, you saw that really comprehensive list of folks that were involved in the development of it, but we had other stakeholder input. For example, the Portrait of a Learner survey, as I mentioned, done before I got here. But we used that data to work with, with, sort of like an extended opportunity to get opinions and feedback from extended groups of people. The entry plan survey is part of my entry. I did extensive surveys with many different groups in the community. We did a listening tour, meaning we were in all the schools. We had partnered with TLA, Teaching Learning Alliance, who also were part of helping to organize and meet with focus groups across the community. And that was really important because it gave people time to meet with somebody that wasn't necessarily connected to the school department. And so we're able to get real, not that people aren't honest and authentic, but sometimes people like the opportunity to share their views and do that in a way that perhaps they wouldn't if the superintendent was in the room. Comprehensive data sources, artifacts, the previous strategic plan, as I mentioned, and AIR report, MCAS data, AP data, capital improvement planning has been going on for years and years here. The budget proposal, what you see, the empty chair in the room, and we highlight that because what we want the community to know is that, as Mrs. Brooksom and Mr. Tattlebaum will remember from our planning time, that we made sure that we constantly reminded people that you're here representing yourself, but you're also here representing others. And that was really something that we saw, I think, during the entire, throughout the entire process. So phase one, phase two, phase three, I mean, we were through phase one, phase two. Guess what? Phase three never ends. Phase three just keeps going, and then guess, you go back to phase one again at some point, phase two and phase three. Because that's the cycle of continuous improvement. And so nothing here is static, and it's something, again, that you'll see that we have to pay close attention to. We already mentioned the mission statement for the Dartmouth Public Schools, again, really important. And one thing that I think the community, I hope, values is looking at this mission statement. There was truly a commitment to, and I would say a painstaking commitment, to ensuring that we had it right here, that the words were right and that every word that we have in both our mission statement and our vision statement, which I'll share with you, has real impact. And it's really, truly what we want to see for our students, for our school community, and for our community in general. Our core values, we had a lot of fun with core values. And one of the things that I hope you see that stand out is the acronym PRIDE. Because that is, that truly represents what Dartmouth is about. There's so much pride in this community. And what we really were able to do is to embrace the, it was the conversation in the room that led to this. But, you know, what each one of those letters represents is truly what the folks that were part of the team had a real commitment to. So the vision statement, I did talk to Mrs. Brooks about this this past Thursday, because we talked about the importance of this vision statement in that this is truly a vision statement for the community. And if you look at the first part of the sentence stem here, united as one Dartmouth, we are invested in the ongoing improvement of our community. That's attributable to every department in this community. And we've had some conversations with folks like Dina St. Pierre over at the library and other folks about how to take that piece of the vision statement and really adopt it to something that can be unique and something specific to each one of the departments in the, in the community of Dartmouth. But you see for us, and there's a reason that they're highlighted, you see the green, and we go into the black font, we're Dartmouth Public Schools. This is who we want to be. Remember, a vision statement is aspirational, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to get there. It means it's going to take us some time to get there. But we have an aspiration to proudly offer unparalleled opportunities leading to educational excellence and success for current and future generations. And I can't understate the current and future generations piece enough because when we were in our strategic planning process, what's really clear is that the folks that go through the schools and the Dartmouth Public Schools return to the Dartmouth community. And in fact, a good number of them actually come to work in all of the Dartmouth community departments and certainly represent the community well in our schools. So, and that doesn't mean every person has grown up in Dartmouth. But I would say that you have a good number of folks who have gone through the school district here, who have grown up here, who have a real commitment to this community and to the children here. And so when you look at excellence and success for current and future generations, I just, I want to emphasize that that was really important to the planning team to really lift that up. Theory of action, a part of just, I think, any really strong strategic plan. And I'm not going to read this to you, but what I will say about it is this theory of action is really and truly a strategic plan in one box, right? So if then, so if we do these things, and if you look at the four bullets, you'll see as I go through the rest of the presentation, that each one of these bullets represents a strategic priority for the school district, our strategic goals. And what will happen if we support these as a school district? You'll see that that's where we will cultivate the safe, supportive, inclusive learning environment. So this is our action plan layout. Focus area one is teaching and learning, as it should be, because that's our business. The business that we're in is teaching and learning. And one of our major goals, teacher, under teaching and learning, is to ensure the alignment of our curriculum. And this isn't a criticism, it's just a fact. It's that some of that had gone a little bit by the wayside. And I'm sure that was related to budget. Because when you implement new resource, a new resource, I just talked about this in our school committee meeting, is we've implemented a new literacy resource in K to five, CKLA it's called. And it's, it's an expensive, it's an investment, I should say. It's an investment, it's an investment in the, not only the resource, but the people. Because to implement a resource, regardless of what it is, you have to invest in the folks that you're expecting to carry out and to use that resource every day. And that's the professional learning. So you can see here what, and what I think is important is that if we say we're going to identify pilot and implement high-quality research-based curriculum, this is in the second box, pre-K to 12 in alignment, you as a community should be able to ask us how and if we did that, and where does that exist? And so we can speak to that by talking about our new literacy resource. We can talk about some of the resources we're implementing at the middle and the high school level. So this isn't just elementary, but we had to have a plan in place. And if you go back to the first box, it says develop and implement a curriculum review cycle because that's something we knew that we needed to do so that we weren't in a position in the future where all of a sudden you needed curriculum in every single grade level and in every single content area. But instead, that you put yourself on a cycle so that you, you have, you're able to budget properly. You're able to forecast what you're going to need moving forward. So that's focus area, oh, focus area objective initiative. So you'll see the same in here are our action steps. We have the proposed timeline. You'll see in most of our timelines, they never end. But that doesn't mean we're not accomplishing things as we are moving along. So we're really proud of that, and we look forward to sharing with the community some of the outcomes as we, again, we're in our second year. We do have a progress monitoring tool that we're using that we're looking forward to presenting publicly. So these are our four focus areas. Each one, as I just showed the slide before, is set up just like the previous slide. So focus area one, teaching and learning. Focus area two, safe and supportive schools. Focus area three, family and community engagement. Thank you for inviting us tonight. This is one of our opportunities to engage with the community and certainly strengthen our relationship with the Select Board. And then budget and capital improvements. And I know Mr. Kylie is going to talk about that. So I'm not going to get into each one of these. I've already talked about teaching and learning. But I will say, under safe and supportive schools, I did mention this in the, our school committee meeting, is we do have somebody who is leading our district crisis team. And again, our schools do a really good job with safety and security. And one of the things that we recognized through entry planning is that we were doing things a little bit different in different buildings. And what we're looking to do, again, is to systematize so that we all are on the same page. And I'm thankful for the group that, Kim Redlon, who's leading that work, and for the folks that are serving, including, we have representation from police and fire. And so it's, there's a broad group that is working to, again, ensure that our students are safe, our students and staff. Focus area three, I mentioned family and community engagement. We're really working on, you see, we have a, we have a new website that we launched just last year. We're looking to keep updating it and make it fresh and be sure that if that's the first place people are going to learn about us, that there is really updated and robust information about the school district right at folks' fingertips. And then focus area four, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Kylie, who's going to just give you an overview of where we are with budget and capital improvements.
Thank you, Dr. Sabina McGuire. So you'll notice in the left-hand box there, it talks about creating a joint vision to address school funding, facility issues, and staff recruitment. And, you know, I think that this is an exciting strategic plan, and it's one that can be And, you know, I think that this is an exciting strategic plan and it's one that can be actionable and implemented. But it does take funding to, to do that. So a few of the steps that we've already begun are, in the spring, with the budget cycle, we worked with Gary and the town administration and the finance committee to develop a plan by which we would gradually, we would use school choice reserve funds to supplement the budget as needed. And wean ourselves off the use of those to the point where we just spend what we get in each year for the school choice funds. So we created that plan.
Another spam call. Sorry to interrupt. This guy is driving me crazy.
So, you know, I, I think we are in a better place than we've been in some time in, in terms of collaborating on the operating budget side. And I'm looking forward to this next budget cycle and we have a lot of work to do. We continue to see, and some of the things that impact our, you know, operating budget and really inform the whole strategic planner, that we continue to see an increase in our high-needs population. You know, forty-three and a half percent of our kids are, are high-needs. We're still two-hundred-and-seventieth of three-hundred-and-twenty-two districts in spending overall. And we have, when you look at staffing ratios, we have less staff than, than the state average. We have less staff than our comparable communities. So, we're doing very well. We're not spending a lot. That's okay. But to improve, you need to invest in the community. So I think we're, you know, hopefully making strides towards that from an operating budget perspective. I guess I'd also mention that, you know, a big component of focus area four is, is related to capital improvements. And we are working both on the short-term capital improvements, which I mentioned in the school committee meeting earlier, in which we've received recommendations for the October twenty-first Fall Town Meeting for technology hardware replacements, security upgrades, high school roof replacement, flooring replacement, and playground improvements at the elementary schools. So we're, you know, we're thankful for those, those funds and I think we have a track record of using the, the funds that are allocated at, at town meeting for capital improvements wisely. And we will continue to do that. There are things that we asked for that were unable to be funded at this, this town meeting, like the high school track reconstruction, HVAC repairs, a school bus, and stadium renovation still stays on our list. So we have a lot of work ahead from a, like, current need, capital improvements, but, but we're appreciative for, you know, what was recommended at this point. The other big piece of this is, is long-range capital planning. And as you know, we have a committee that is, you know, organized by the select board that's, that's looking at that and has a, has a presentation tomorrow night on, on a portion of that, that plan. And I, you know, I think it's encouraging. I think that we have some major project needs that are very soon on the horizon, that were identified by that, that committee. The high school roof, we talked a little bit, I, I mentioned it, in terms of the short-term capital needs, that would fund a feasibility study for a replacement. And we're hoping to hear from the, the MSBA regarding acceptance into their accelerated repair program later this month, actually in October. And then the other projects, like I mentioned, the stadium, that's still, you know, a, a project that does need to be addressed, as well as eventually replacing the, the current schools. We have three schools that were built in the nineteen-fifties and they will eventually need to be replaced. So we don't want to be in a position where the town needs to do that all at once. And we hope that through this long-term planning process, we're able to create a system by which we can do that over time and, and make it more affordable for folks. But, so, you know, I, I think we've made a lot of progress already on focus area four, but there's a lot of work ahead.
Right. And I'd just add that, and I know Mr. Kylie already mentioned it, but I just, I, I just want you to be able to make the connection to the district's strategic plan and see focus area four and how clearly it's identified and how really what Mr. Kylie just shared with you, if you look at key action steps, you can see that those, those steps are being taken. You know, and what, what are the initiatives? Communicate and advocate for instructional operational needs of the district. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that here, because you can see that our major focus for focus area four is enhancing collaboration between the schools and town government. And this is one of the ways that we hope to do that. And again, we've met with, we met with Cody and Gary earlier in the year. I just recently met with the new HR person and those are the kinds of relationships we're really looking to strengthen. So that's our dashboard. Yep. We're really proud of it. It's in all of our schools now. And really, that's a snapshot of our district's strategic plan. I think one of the things that Mrs. Brooks and I talked about was the importance of sharing with you and with the community, who are our staff. I mentioned to you earlier that many of the folks that work in our schools grew up here, they've returned to the Dartmouth Public Schools, they've committed really their lives here. So this is an example, though, of when you look at what the schools are and what the needs are of the school is really dependent on the students that we serve. So this is our pre-K staff, our smallest school. And although it's a small school, the high-needs, it's a great school, as Mrs. Brooks has spent a lot of time there for us in the last, really, two years. But you can see that there are quite a few folks who work there, but remember who the students are that they're caring, that are in their care there. They're some of our most fragile kids who need lots of extra support. So we're grateful to them. Here's our DeMello staff. Again, thinking about what's unique about each school is really important in looking even at the overall size of, of the faculties. The Potter, Potter and DeMello, they are pretty much, I think, the same building, Mr. Kylie?
Just flip-flop.
Just flip-flop.
Same designer, same contractor.
So you can see the staffs look pretty similar. And then we look at the Quinn and say, ooh, why are there so many people at the Quinn? Well, the Quinn also, it is our largest elementary school and it also houses our, some of our special education programs. And obviously with that, we have a number of staff who have very specialized skills in supporting some of our children. Here's our middle school. I like to joke about the middle school a little bit, because look how organized they are. This is the most organized group of all the schools.
Run by a, a couple of football coaches. You can see everyone has taken the football, uh, team picture.
Wondering if you would pick up on that? No, because that is exactly what it looks like, a football team picture.
Or pads, shoulder pads.
And they were already, like, sitting there when the photographer, Mr. Tebold, walked in to take their photos, right? And then here we have Dartmouth High School. And so what's important and we want to share with the community is, these are the folks that make up our schools, these are the people working with our children every day, and we want to celebrate them and just, we keep them front and center and just please know that the folks that are working in our, in your schools and the Dartmouth Public Schools are really committed people. And they do a great job in supporting our students. And we'll go, just go back to we are one Dartmouth and hopefully you'll use that vision statement and somehow incorporate it into the work that you're leading here in the community.
Challenge accepted.
By the way, if you'd like to look at the district's strategic plan on the website, there is a link here. And it is actually a beautiful document. We like to show it off. So this is, this is the more detailed plan. What I just gave you was an overview of the plan. But on the website itself, there is a link to the plan that gives, you'll see, there's different parts to it. There are, you know, some pictures, there's some narrative around the planning process, the phases we went through, the mission, the reason for a mission, what a vision statement represents, and so on. But there is a detailed strategic action plan as well.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask if this board has questions. Mr. O'Neill, I saw you busily taking notes.
Yeah, well, Jim and, Jim and I have had the opportunity to sit down on, on some of the focus area four issues. We discussed school choice and the fact that that number has not increased in how many years, twenty-nine, I think it was?
Yes.
Which is outrageous. And I think, you know, a town like Dartmouth has a, has a distinct opportunity where our neighbors maybe to the east do not. So, you know, there's a little bit of traction there with the state delegation. I spoke to Chris Markey recently about it again. We had a meeting, Heidi, myself, and Cody, with the state representatives, and that was one of the issues that we brought up. They are, they're working on it. That's going to be a slow process, for sure. I mean, a lot of the delegations from some of the larger towns in the, and cities in the state have, are on the flip side of that equation. So you're going, you know, we'll be up against it, but I'm not, I'm not afraid of the fight.
Chris, I just want to clarify, when you talked about school choice, where we're sort of upside down is that for twenty-nine years, the state has set the price as five thousand dollars, even though it has, you know, annually gone up for per pupil expenditures, the state still caps it at five thousand. So the traction we're trying to get is letting our state reps know that even if they incrementally went up, it would be helpful. So I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead, Chris.
Um, the, yeah, it's really not that issue. Jim, the, the challenges that you have, you know, I'm looking at that picture, I know a lot of those guys in that front row.
And they're getting ready.
They're getting ready to kind of bail out. You know, what are the, what are we doing? You know, where, where is Dartmouth right now when we look at the retirement ages? You know, what's that scale look like? We know where the enrollment's going. Where are we on the teachers?
We've, we've had a lot of people retire over the last eight years or so. We still have, you know, a group with a lot of years of service that will be retiring. I think, you know, the biggest hurdle that, that Dr. Saban McGuire and I face when we're trying to replace folks is, is health insurance. So we are not competitive with many other communities in terms of our health insurance costs, although I, I do recognize that the town has tried to make some strides in that regard and, and, you know, offering some, you know, a different plan with, with a health savings account and everything. But the reality is that we lead with those conversations in a lot of our hiring processes because we don't want to waste our time and get people to a finalist or our selection and then they walk away. It happens. So it's a great community to work in. Many of us are thrilled to work here. But when it comes down to it, if we're not competitive and in some cases our salaries are not as competitive as other communities in addition to, to health insurance, that, that puts us at a big disadvantage, so.
So I'll be on the insurance committee when, when those meetings start up again. And I'm looking forward to it, because I, I think, you know, that traverses every department that we have in town. And, and, you know, competition is a word that you brought up that, that I will reiterate. We can't function if we're not competitive. I don't want to be the, the lowest guy, but I also don't want to be the highest guy. I need to be somewhere to the fifty and sixty percentile where we're competitive, because the fact remains Dartmouth is a great spot. People want to, people want to work here, they want to live here. So let's take advantage of that. Let's get us to a point where, when those decisions come, at that last meeting with, on, on an inter, an intake, that it's not the benefits that blow, you know, blow the deal. So, so I'm really looking forward to being involved in the, that committee. You know, you, you talked about, in the vision statement, about investment. You know, it, it's a great choice of word, because it isn't just the investment for the volunteers, for the, the teachers. You know, people invest a lot of time. All the board members, all of our board members, the collective employees. But it also requires investment from the taxpayer and town meeting members also. You know, this, this collaboration is very important because you need to get out ahead of those discussions. So I'm, I'm glad that you're really engaging the community, because at some point, we're going to have to have those discussions. And what does an investment look like to, to you? Might look different to you. However, we all gain by having a, a strong school system. There's no question about that. On, on the focus area two, safe and supportive, the, what's the district's strategy for, for this mental health issue? You know, the, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of work being done on it now, but my wife's in the, you know, preschool area, daycare. And wait till you guys see what's coming down the pike. You know, I'm sure you already know to a certain extent, but it's not good. It really isn't. You know, how far are we ahead on that issue? How much investment are we going to need in order to make sure we're doing the right thing?
I would say that you've done a really good job in investing in support folks, people who are supporting students' social, emotional learning. We have a number of adjustment counselors in all of our schools. As a matter of fact, I think it's quite impressive and that's one area that I think the district has invested in. And I think that some of that came out of the COVID-19 money originally. I know that Dartmouth had dedicated some of that, the SRF funds, to expanding the, the staff to support students' social, emotional learning.
And some of it is now being funded through the school choice funds that we're going to attempt to wean off over time, so.
And the other thing that I think, again, shows a spirit of collaboration between the town and, and the school, the town, the select board, and the school department is the, the allocation of the opioid funding. I mean, some of that money we're using in interesting ways, I think, are hoping to use. One, one, one area is that we've invested through the use of, of the funding to invest in a social, emotional learning curriculum at Dartmouth High School. And that's something that wasn't in existence before. And so we're looking forward to the implementation of that resource, which hasn't happened quite yet, but we do have a structure in place. Also, the expansion of vape detectors. Now, when you think about the vape detectors, it's not about us, it's about preventative measures, but it's also about how do we then, as a school district, when we know a student is maybe struggling with a nicotine addiction, how do we then direct them and their parents to the resources that they need to hopefully divert some of that behavior? Also, there's a commitment to a, a new safety person for Dartmouth High School. And what's important about that, and it's, again, not about us policing our students, but about having adults in the building that are ensuring that our hallways are safe, that our bathrooms are safe, safe. And really, these are the folks, they build really strong relationships with the kids. So there's a benefit to that. We're also looking to use some of that funding for after, to expand after-school programming. One thing that we don't have here in Dartmouth, at, at least I'll speak direct to the elementary level, is we don't really have many after-school opportunities for our youngest learners. And so that's a focus of ours and that, ours, and that does exist in our strategic plan.
When, when you talk about safety, do we, have we taken advantage? There's a, I, I think there's a grant that covers it too, but there's a program through SERPET that they will do an assessment on buildings, doorways, aligned with fire, police. Have, have you seen it?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to it. We've, we, through Chief Levesque, were connected with the Department of Homeland Security last year, who came down and did a comprehensive security assessment of each of our buildings. They were great to work with, very practical suggestions that, you know, are actionable. Part of that is what we're hoping to fund with the two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar request at the October twenty-first Town Meeting, is to address some of the issues that were highlighted in the, in that assessment. They look not only at the physical security, but the policies and procedures that we have in place. in place in the buildings, the staffing that we have, how we're, how we're, how we're teaching kids, you know?
So, this, this program that I believe is still running, and I'll get some more information, I'll just send it to you and see if, see if it'll help, i- is more on the physical side. Labeling of doors, so when, when that, when either a fire truck or a police officer rolls up, they hit that screen, they can tell exactly what B5 door is and where it's, where it is. And what camera's going to be in the, the library, they know exactly which one to hit. So, I'll, I'll see if I can get some more information on that. It's more physical.
Yeah.
But maybe it dovetails well with, with the work.
It probably, it probably would. I mean, those are a lot of the things that we talked about with homeland security.
Yeah. The, what, what can the town do in the areas of consolidation of tasks, work? You know, sharing, I'm sorry, I'm probably stealing some of the, some of the questions that Heidi, yes, you can check them off.
Yep.
Sharing services between town departments that we can help each other, I guess, try and get some kind of savings. Are there overlaps, are there not overlaps? I'm sure maybe, it might even come out in that, that committee, but I'm just curious.
Well, I'll answer, one of them has, most recent, has been our HR hire for, in going forward with that position, we hired someone that actually has not only municipal experience, but school department experience. Although she's housed in this facility, she is working with the school department, and specifically, I think Kate Gemptner, who, the secretary to the superintendent, when a new hire comes on, she's able to assist with that. So, that's been our most recent. We're also sharing youth advocate services, and the DART substance use coordinator is working, both are working with the school department. I think we have some of those little pieces happening.
Well, that person who I met with, Rachel, right?
Yep.
I met with Rachel last, last week, I think it was, and, and she and Dolores were both at Dartmouth High School for the open house. But one of the things that Rachel and I talked about with the team is how she can work to help support exactly what I was just talking about, students who may be engaging in that kind of risky behavior, whether it's vaping, and, and how we can connect to offer support to those students and those families outside of Dartmouth Public Schools, but still in collaboration with. So, even things like, you know, we just met with our, your director of libraries, Dean of St. Pierre. Now, it's not, it is sharing services because one of the things that we're looking to do is collaborate, and they, they are wonderful collaborators, but we're looking to just expand on that collaboration so that more of our students are accessing library services. And so, that's a way that we are sharing resources. It might not seem like that monetarily, but when your community and the folks that live in your community are using your town services, that's something that you do want to promote, and those are the things that we're focused on.
Yeah, we tried to tie in historical a little bit, too. Maybe that program works again this year or not. I'd like to see it, like to see it happen, but.
I mean, if I could add too, I mean, because I think it would be a shame not to mention the collaborative efforts that are really outstanding between Dartmouth Community Television, who goes above and beyond for our, you know, our school operation. The DPW is fantastic to work with if we need them for something, they're always there, and the Dartmouth Police Department, who we work very closely with, you know, and have, have three school resource officers in our buildings, and then collaborate on crisis planning and lots of other, you know, lots of other things with them, so.
I guess the point, my point would be, if you do see anything, that there is the potential for savings either for the town or for the school department, that we can collaborate on fleet management, anything like that, it's worth throwing those ideas out to see if we can engage. Lastly, so the investment, getting back to that, strong, engaged, and most importantly, successful system pays dividends on everybody's investments, right? So, we're looking for dividends. People have to remember that when we come to them at some point and say, you know, we need, we need some investment. And it goes from, well, I don't have kids in the system. Doesn't matter. That house value is still, still as high as it is because we've got a great system. So, thank you for your work.
Stanley.
David, I want to go last, yeah, thanks.
All right. Dave Tatabam?
Thank you. It's always a privilege to talk to the school department, thank you. We're all very aware of the statistics about how low the spending rates are, and we talk about it year after year. I look at it, trying to look at it from a very high bird's eye view, the sequence of events. My hat's off to Jim, Kylie, and our whole group of long-range planning, because I think that's first and foremost. What do we need to spend over the next 40 years? Because we, because it's, if we don't, we're going to be in bigger trouble, not, not just with schools, but certainly with our flushing toilets and drinking clean water. But, once we get that in order, do the best we can with that. Then we have a budget advisory group. The message was very clear from town meeting. Are we spending money as efficiently as possible throughout the town? I think we do a pretty good job. I'd like to feel we can find some of those funds. Maybe there's some departments and categories we could minimize or maybe shrink, and I'd like to think we can then support some of that money and move it towards the schools. And then, we look at what's needed for the short and long-term needs for the schools and kind of money that's going to involve. And if I'm a taxpayer, whether I have three kids in school, or I'm a senior and have no more kids in school, if we can prove to our citizens that we are spending our money wisely, and we're doing the best we can, and we're underfunded in our schools, we can ask, here's what we need based on this overall assessment and job like this, this presentation. I think it'd be much, no one wants to spend more money, but I think there's confidence that we've done it the right way, in a sequence of events that says, here's what we need, and this is what our kids need. I think that we have a good shake over the short term, then then put together a fund that may require adjustments in our tax rate, whatever that might be. But how can we not do that without the sequence of events? And I think it's happening. And I think that the end result of all that is, we don't spend enough money on our schools, period. And money's not going to fall from the skies, it's going to be done in a sequence that's fair and has facts attached to it. And I'm hoping that over the short term, the next couple, three years, we can put this together and do it the right way in collaboration just like this. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I, I got a note here from a resident, and I know you expounded on this, but maybe you want to deal, deal with it a little further. The school's strategic plan consists, makes note of One Dartmouth, as you see, and, but what does that mean to the schools and in what ways will the approach show up in the, in the broader community?
Well, I, I think that one of the, one, when you talk, as far as the schools are concerned, I mean, we're promoting One Dartmouth throughout our school communities. It's something that you'll, you'll see in every building that you walk into now, whether it's One Dartmouth pin, that I know Mr. Kylie has his on tonight, that we, we're going to.
Am I on?
Oh, wow, I got a good one.
Shmo.
We will, we're planning on that. But, so within the school community itself, there is a real commitment to One Dartmouth. That's something you'll hear, and you'll hear folks talking about, whether they are wearing One Dartmouth t-shirts, One Dartmouth pin. We are One Dartmouth. I mean, we talk about it a lot. We don't just talk about it, we're committed to it through our strategic plan, whether it's, you know, looking at the way our elementary schools are working together. We have three different elementary school buildings. Really pleased with the, the work that the three principals of those schools are doing to, to align the work in all three of those buildings across the district and to really create a sense that we're all connected in the work that we're doing. So, and with our middle school and our high school folks, too, we're, we're coming together as, as a leadership team in order to ensure that we, we are all aligned in our work, and that that work is being driven by what exists in our strategic plan, whether, again, I'll just mention because we met with them today, our union leadership. We sit down with our leadership in this district, and we have really meaningful conversations about the work that's happening in our schools, and how we can support each other in making sure that Dartmouth Public Schools is offering, you know, the highest quality educational opportunities for students, and we're supporting our educators and staff. As far as the town, reaching out to the town itself, this is one way that we're doing that. We're saying we're part, we are One Dartmouth. We're not the school department and the town. We're all part of the same community, and we all want the same things for this community. And we know that investing in schools, you said, you know, we talked about property values, and those are important. And the other thing that's more important, really, is the support you have for your young people and how they return to your community as community members, and how they contribute to a healthy community. Because this, this is a community that I see so much commitment from in terms of the folks that live here and work here, and that's something that you want to promote, and it doesn't happen by accident. You have to be intentional in the way that you honor the, not just, I think, you know, Mr. Kylie talked about it, this, you know, whether it's the school department, the police department, the fire department, and we're all leaning on each other all the time. We are part of one community.
I'm going to talk a little bit more about, that's on my list as well, so thank you, Stan. Any more, Stan?
Well, I just, I know you, the five, five-year plan, and you mentioned briefly that, that we're going to need to replace a school at some point, or more than one school. So, where, where are we going to put these schools?
Kathleen, Kathleen and I both have follow-ups to the last question.
So, I'm trying to make a point, but, but, you know, this is going to come faster than you think, and, and to solidify properties doesn't happen overnight. And we have very little property the town owns.
I think Mr. Kylie has been working on it, and he has discussed some options in prior meetings, so.
And that was discussed at our September.
But it's just something I want to bring up, and I know it's not going to happen tomorrow, but we can't drag our feet about this. We need to, we need to be very, very cautious in how we approach this. We don't want to have to, at some point, go out to the public and find a piece of property to build a high school.
Right. So, September 17th, at the Long Range Capitol Planning Night, they talked about the plan. That was a night specific to schools, and I just want to say that I could identify in the audience, everyone but two people, therefore I hope that there were 30,000 others watching it on TV at home, because this is important.
We hope.
But, we can't get ahead of ourselves. It's a plan. The first thing we're doing right now is going forth with the high school roof, and it was very well laid out over, and this plan is not over 40 years. We're looking at, I mean, you know, maybe 20, and it's a lot of work, and it's not like any other thing, but unfortunately, we can't put the cart before this horse. We have to make sure we have the funding and the community investment, the community support for it. And that's why I, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to close with this. It's all about money. At the end of the day, it's always about money. What can we afford or not afford? So, we need to come up with a plan at some point, a little long, much longer than the next year or so, but, but with the thought that, that we need to invest in the town in Dartmouth. And if we don't, we're missing the boat, and we're not going to succeed. Thank you.
Can we have comments about the One Dartmouth now?
Yes, please.
Mr. Oliver?
We're probably going to say the same thing because we both raised it. I just, when you were asking, so I wanted to add to what Dr. Saban McGuire said, and something that I've recognized through our strategic plan and some of the efforts throughout our school, that One Dartmouth also means, the way that it is seen is through children seeing themselves as active participants, having a voice and a say, and also seeing themselves at our high school, right? It's, it, there are options at the high school level for students where they can choose Bristol Aggie or Voke, and that there is a place for everyone, of course, but I think there's been an investment in having a similar experience and then having that sense of belonging and saying, wow, like envisioning themselves at that high school level because some of the efforts that are, that are being done that I haven't seen before. So, I'm very proud of it, and I think that is another way that we are One Dartmouth, where students are entering at pre-K and then wanting to stay through grade 12.
Sure. Mr. Oliver?
Is that you? Is that different?
No, it's actually a little bit different. I'm going to take it another step further. I, I guess for me, One Dartmouth means something a little bit different through the eyes of both parents, caregivers, as well as our students in Dartmouth, that all of our students have these same opportunities across the town. When I first came on 13 years ago now, I don't know if that was, if I could say that was the case, that whether you were a student in DeMello versus a student in Potter versus a student in Quinn, that you're receiving the same educational experiences as well as class ratios, might not have been the same. There was a preschool, but it was located, there was only one preschool that was located at Cushman. There was no preschool in the north end of town, and I made it a point several years ago that we needed to get a preschool program in the north end of town for those families for the north, that reside over there, and we have one now. So, to me, you know, equal opportunities across all grade levels and across all schools and across all zip codes is One Dartmouth.
That's interesting. Kathleen, so that, that really does dovetail with, with the investment in the town, because when you, when you look at that, I never thought of that. When you look at that issue with enrollment, you've got to keep those kids in our system. We have to be competitive, we have to show them that we're investing in the programs that we have and the buildings that we offer. You know, in Westport, in the high school, when they had an investment in Westport, there was a shift from Stang to Westport, and Stang felt it. They felt it pretty badly. And it never dawned on me that those kids have a choice. Our kids have a choice. So, it's about the jobs, too, and it's about keeping good jobs in this town, and you can't continue to have a slippage. So, you have to, you have to, you know, backfill it, you have to invest in it, and it's important because we, you know, the, you know, $70,000 spent in Dartmouth with a Dartmouth person stays in this town. It gets spent in all the local areas. That, there have been study upon study about that issue, and we, we need to keep good jobs in town, we need to keep the money in town, and that just helps every other aspect of it, so, in my opinion. Sorry.
And now me. So, first on my list was One Dartmouth. I grew, I am a townie, lead green, we all know that. But when I grew up through Dartmouth Public Schools, we had the 4-7 and the 4-8, and we had the 4-7 and the 4-8 that had a hockey game, that had a football game, that had, we always were in, you know, competition with whichever end of town you were in. And I really do see that has been eliminated. We've always had one high school, but we still knew which side we came from. I see that differently. I, I would like to give, there was a student at Dartmouth High School that developed the one D to represent One Dartmouth. The name escapes me. I tried to give the credit to Ryan Shea, the principal, and he immediately told me the student's name, did not take the credit, but I thought that was fabulous, and that one symbol solidified to me the work that we, on this board, need to do. Because one of the things that you said was, it's not all about the zip code, it's about we're One Dartmouth. It is not the school budget versus everybody else. We are One Dartmouth. We have one budget. When I pay my taxes, they go into one big pool, and then there's, they're, you know, kind of shopped out. But we are One Dartmouth. The other thing I wanted to just highlight is the strategic plan process. Now, you know, truth be told, I think everybody knows that I worked for the Dartmouth Public Schools for, since I kept going back 40 years, but, well, I know, and I'm so young, but over the years, working on strategic plans, it was always important that the people that were developing the strategic plan were the people that were going to carry out the strategic plan. Because if somebody creates a plan for you and then hands it to you, it doesn't mean anything to you. And if they think it can be done, but have never walked in that trench, they have no idea. idea. But we had people around the table that were going to implement that plan. And that's how we've done strategic plans in the school department for years. And the process was fabulous and the group that led us through was equally fabulous. And it's very personal to us because one of the things that they would talk about is what's going to be our picture on our main page? So, you know, we were up against other communities and they were known for clocks, building of clocks, and they had a clock tower. Oh, gosh, what is it going to be? Well, it's One Dartmouth. That's who we are. And we take great Dartmouth pride, and that's why we use that acronym. And I'll be honest, our greatest sense of Dartmouth pride is our athletic teams when they perform, our band when it performs, our theater when it performs, and our students when they are successful. There's also a bit of Dartmouth pride when you go to the beaches, okay, in our, in our beautiful coastline. But the majority of our Dartmouth pride comes from the school department. I have to also give a shout out to DPW because on trash days, when they pick everything up, that's a source of Dartmouth pride as well. I'm sure there's another department that I'm going to get hate mail from. But I do think we can't have Dartmouth pride. We can't sell Dartmouth pride unless it really does exist. For those of you that want to see it, watch the football games on Friday nights, even when they're televised, and see the team go over to cheer with the students that are there supporting them and you get that One Dartmouth feeling immediately. I also want to talk about the process that the school department has done to think about inclusive versus exclusive opportunities. For example, as the Chair of DART, which is our Dartmouth Advocates for Addiction Recovery and Treatment, one of the things that Dr. Saban McGuire talked about is expanding the after-school program. We know that folks that feel disconnected look for something to do to make them feel connected. By keeping our students involved, and 65% of our students at Dartmouth High School are involved with sports, theater, or the music program, which is incredible. Let's talk about the other 35%. We do have a lot of committees at Dartmouth High School. But as Dr. Saban McGuire said, the transportation is the key. So it's an exclusive practice to offer opportunities for after-school programs and say, but a, a someone has to pick you up. If you don't have someone that can pick you up at whatever time that is, it's exclusive to offer it and then not everybody can participate. So it's a way for us to look, can we provide the busing? Can we expand the opportunities? Can we let families know how important it is to keep their kids involved? And that's a way to make the practice inclusive. And a beautiful example at Dartmouth High School, and I believe they're also doing it at Dartmouth Middle School, is the unified sports team. To see our students who have never played a sport because they were excluded for many reasons, perhaps they didn't have the skill set, they didn't have the stamina for it. But on the unified sports team, filled out with their, their peers who have skills, it's, it's beautiful to watch. The expansion of the program for our 18 to 21-year-old students at Dartmouth High School, and I'll be the first to admit, although you know I love the school department, I thought, really? Do we need this? And then I went there and I saw the program and I thought, these are our, our kids. We should be educating them in our town. And the program that Heather Church is, sorry, Stephanie Church is running at Dartmouth High School is beautiful. And if I had a child or a grandchild involved with that, I'd be so thrilled that they were having these opportunities to get some real-life skills that are going to benefit them in the long run. Tonight, we invited you here for exactly this. The process was fabulous. I accept the challenge. I take on the United as One Dartmouth. We are invested in the ongoing improvement of our community. And I challenge the select board to fill in the blank. How are we going to keep that up? And then I intend to challenge all of our departments, how are they investing in that One Dartmouth? Each of our departments, just like your department, has facets. We have, in DPW, they've got people that have sewer and they have people that don't. How do they serve One Dartmouth? So I thank you for being the inspiration to our board tonight. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
And I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I don't think so.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Nunes made the motion. Kathleen, seconded. All in favor or do we do a roll call?
Nope.
All in favor.
Aye.
All right. And we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again. Always good to see you.
Absolutely. Same here.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. So we have a, a long list of new business and I thank those of you who stayed in the audience and you do are part of our new business for hanging in there. So I have someone potentially here for the application for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers for Buffalo Wild Wings. If you could, hello, hello.
Ready to rock and roll.
Awesome.
I didn't bring my presentation though, so you'll have to bear with me.
Okay. That's okay.
So we're, we're just removing three officers, Lautik, Jerry Pipes, and Robert Jones Jr. And our proposed officers are John F. Bowie, Eric M. Astron, Nils H. Oxen, Catherine D. Jasbon. And this is for Blazin' Wings Incorporated, doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings Holding, ABCC License Number 02667 RS 0266, located at 186 Dartmouth Mall, North Dartmouth, Mass.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Can you identify yourself, by the way?
Absolutely. Colin Ahern. Thank you.
And your title?
District Manager.
Thank you.
All right. In your application, we do have those names, John Bowie, correct? As the President, Eric Astron as the Vice President, Niles Oxen as the Secretary, Catherine D. Jasbon as the CFO. So we have all of them. Anyone on the board with questions?
No. Motion to approve.
Motion made. Motion seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. All right. Next, we have Waterways Management Commission Appointment. I understand the gentleman was not feeling well. James or Jamie Simmons. We received both a letter of interest from him as well as Dana Dormbusch, who wrote to, that she has interviewed Jamie and would like him to be appointed to the board. Remember Keith Murphy? Sorry. Kevin Murphy had stepped down and they had two strong candidates that they met with. And they're asking us to appoint Jamie Simmons to the committee and appoint Keith Murphy as a non-voting member. And you may recall that a couple, maybe a year or so ago, we had promoted, we had put Eli Powell as a non-voting member. And then when another opening had come up, he was easily able to step into the position. So they're asking us tonight to appoint Jamie Simmons as a voting member and Keith Murphy as a non-voting member.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Neill, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
So passes. We will let them know that we have, we have done that. Next, we have a youth commission reappointment. And that is Shawnee Mattos. And we have in our packet her attendance, which you can see on page 31. She was, attended 75% of the meetings that they held in this most recent calendar year. And she is asking to be put back on. Oh, hi Shawnee.
Hi, it's Shawnee.
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 Shawnee. I am sorry. Shawnee, thank you for coming. I, just a little bit, I'm going to ask you what has been the most rewarding experience to be, to continue being part of the youth advocacy?
So I'm a lifelong resident of Dartmouth, so being able to serve the community and, you know, have a voice and the resources and everything that we are able to do for, you know, the people of Dartmouth, the youth.
And you want to still do it?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions?
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome back. All right. Okay, next, I'm going to have Matt Dansrow come up. We're going to talk about the Steppingstone Partnership. I don't know if, Cody, you want to start or you want Matt to start and tell us a little bit about what this is?
I think we can let Matt start and then I can fill in some information afterwards.
While I'm up here, this is Danielle Brown. She is actually, what is your official title?
I am Project Director of Homeless Services with Steppingstone.
Steppingstone. And I have a little brain issue. Sometimes I mix Seven Hills with Steppingstone, so if that happens, I mean Steppingstone.
So is that, is that out of New Bedford?
I am located in New Beaufort.
Yeah, Steppingstone covers the region though.
Thank you.
So what had happened was, let's, so let me back up a little bit here. So the cold weather shelter for the Bristol County Continuum of Care, which is the homelessness continuum for the area, has used the Dartmouth Motor Inn for more than a decade. It started about 2014 where they put people in inclement weather who are on the street or in their cars into the Dartmouth Motor Inn overnight. And over the past couple of years, the numbers on the street have increased and so has the amounts that the Dartmouth Motor Inn and sometimes the Capri have been used for the overnight shelter. Mainly who's been running the overnight shelter over the past 10 years has been Catholic Charities of Fall River. And last year, and was this last year or the year before?
I, I've actually been doing this since 2020.
2020, okay.
During the pandemic, we started. And we stopped for a year.
For a year, yeah.
And then we restarted.
And in the past, this was mostly done with volunteers, but the state has stepped in over the past five or six years and started funding this. For the need that's out there, the state has really expanded the money. And Catholic Charities currently has a five-year contract and the state, through the Executive Office of Living, Housing and Living Communities, ELLH, has asked Steppingstone to step up and also do the cold weather shelter. So Steppingstone is looking for a letter of support from the town for the RFR process.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
I, I've received a very high endorsement for the program, that we should certainly support this. And I will also add that if Matt, if Matt says to do it, we should do it because Matt is the man.
He knows.
I can express respect for everything he does and high, high support that we, that we do.
Yeah. And, and over the years, Dartmouth residents have used this. Last year, for example, there was a 78-year-old gentleman who was evicted from one of our 55 and older communities. He ended up at the hospital, sleeping at the hospital, came to see me, did the intake, formed an of the cold weather shelter. He actually started going into the cold weather shelter, which got him in actually into Long Term Sister Rose, which actually eventually got him into Danielle's program, who placed him in assisted living just a few months ago. So one of the things the cold weather shelter does is actually gets contact with people who might not get a lot of contact with or are new to the system because it expands the ability to house some of these people. And, you know, it's all about the partnerships too. You know, it's, one of the partnerships, I'm happy to say, we have a 68-year-old woman who's been living in her car in town that's actually going in to pack a permanent supportive housing on Wednesday. So it's just, it's all part of the partnerships.
As they said, this has been a shelter going on for 10-plus years. And this is the first time that the state has done this process of asking for support from the community. I just want to also let you know that this was an agenda item at our Dartmouth Community Social Outreach Team meeting last week. And we did discuss any concerns. We had the chief, the fire department, we had representatives from the Board of Health, and we had information that Chief Leveque had shared with us about numbers of incidents at these, our different motels. And we went through all of those and said, just reiterating, this is a cold weather shelter which is used only when the temperature dips below 32 degrees. Just so that you're aware and the viewing public is aware, in order to get a room, you need to be down at the Sister Rose in New Beaufort, do an intake there. You must not have ever been thrown out of another cold weather shelter. You have to have, provide them with information. And they keep very strong records because they are able to look back and see which hotel you were sent to, which room you were sent to. If you are there and the numbers, the, the temperature dips down, at 6:00 PM, you are transported to Moby Dick. At 6:00 AM in the morning, after you've been fed dinner. At 6:00 AM in the morning, the van returns, picks you up and takes you down to Sister Rose. If it dips down again, the process starts again. There is no one that gets to, you don't get to stay over unless we're in the midst of a blizzard. Then you get to stay over. We were never in the midst of a blizzard last year. So the cold weather shelter last year was only used for 27 days.
Actually, the cold weather shelter runs from October-ish till March. And actually, last year, they used it 70-plus days, I think it was.
Yeah, so we extended.
27 consecutive, that's.
There were 27 or 28 consecutive days that was open, which was a record for it.
Yes, Dave.
Could you clarify, you're asking what your letter of support and what the letter should say or?
I have a draft.
We have it. And I'm actually going to read the draft to Matt and Danielle.
This is a different one.
By the way, I have to, I can't say enough about Danielle and like if you look her up on the internet, she's got tons of things about her. But one of the things I know about Danielle is if there is an issue, Danielle's the first one there and the last one to leave. And that's, that's Danielle. That's the best way I can describe Danielle.
Thank you. All right. So this is going to Gordon Hawkins, the Director of Individual Homelessness Systems/Division of Housing Stabilization. On behalf of the Town of Dartmouth, we are writing to convey our strong support for the requests for funding being submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities by Steppingstone, Inc. The requested funding will allow Steppingstone to operate a temporary winter overflow shelter, providing critical, safe, and appropriate accommodation for individuals experiencing homelessness in our community. If awarded, we are excited to have the opportunity, excuse me, to evaluate the program's success after the first year and provide feedback for improvement. Each winter, the demand for overflow shelter capacity in Mass., Mass. DOT 505 Continuum of Care Bristol County far outpaces the resources available. The Town of Dartmouth respectfully urges ELLHLC to consider Steppingstone's request for funding. This investment will expand life-saving capacity, strengthen our local safety net, and advance our shared commitment to ensuring that no one is left without shelter in the harshest conditions.
Motion approved.
All right. So, yes, a motion by someone on our board. Dave had made a motion to accept and send the letter, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. We will pass it around for signing. Thank you. And thank you both for coming in.
Thanks.
And for those folks that need to be there, thank you for making sure that they're not left out in the pool.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right. Next, on our, I'm going to find the right agenda. We have the... We have the fall town meeting warrant approval and select board recommendations. Hang on.
Sorry.
I'm signing this and sending it down.
This is empty now.
Yeah, we know how to, we know how to kill a crowd. Okay, so the fall town meeting warrant, as you are aware, I just want to call your attention, we did get some feedback from a couple of boards. You'll find that on page thirty-four and thirty-five. And, yes. Yep, and thirty-six, so make sure you've seen that. Yes, the, yep.
Question?
Yes.
Is the finance committee voted on these articles?
There's a number that the finance committee has not voted on yet. Primarily, they revolve around the charter changes as the board, the SLU board had yet to make a decision. So they are meeting tomorrow to finish up their recommendations. But other than that, the capital improvement article and the last, I'm sorry, Article fifteen in your draft, which is the appropriation of community development funds, the finance committee has voted on all of them. With those exceptions, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Article One, you'll find that in your packet on page forty. Community Preservation Committee, Aiken House Cellar, Cellar Water slash Moisture Mitigation Project. And this was to appropriate twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve to the Dartmouth Heritage Preservation Trust for Aiken House.
So this is the only CPC article this year. The CPC is recommending this for funding. I will note, this would need to be contingent upon any lease agreement. The RFP for, I'm sorry, RFQ for responses for the lease of the Aiken House was due today and we did not receive any responses.
No.
So that is something that the board will need to, we will be discussing at a future meeting, but that is just something to note. That would have to be contingent upon a lease agreement with Dartmouth Historic Preservation Trust.
Did you say we did not receive any?
We did not receive any proposals.
So, we'll move on.
Okay, we need to approve this article tonight, right?
The board would make either a recommendation.
A recommendation to?
Motion to recommend, second.
Okay, all in favor to recommend? Do I need to do a roll on this one?
No.
No, unless we, okay. All in favor of recommending this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor. So this is a four to zero. Article Two, appropriation to the stabilization fund. Vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the surplus revenue for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B.
Motion to recommend.
He's going to tell us a little bit more.
I mean, I can, more than happy to. You may recall, we have been making annual appropriations to our stabilization fund. Our financial policy is to keep this fund at ten percent. We are above ten percent, hence why it's only two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We really just want to show a commitment to continuing to fund our stabilization fund. It helps with our bond rating as well.
Excellent. Motion?
Motion to recommend, second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no opposed, motion passes four-zero. Article number three. This is the appropriation to stabilization fund for collective bargaining and non-union agreements. Appropriate the sum of six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from the surplus revenue for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund for collective bargaining and non-union personnel agreements, as approved by Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B.
Motion to recommend.
Questions?
Oh, questions, yes.
I can give up.
Yep, we can, yep.
So, this is, a number of years ago, the town created the stabilization fund for collective bargaining and non-union agreements. Given that we are in the middle of a compensation classification study, also going into a bargaining year for all of our unions in town, we are essentially just putting money aside to fund the implementation of the comp and class study as well as the contract negotiations. This would put the account up around a million dollars. We have about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand in there currently. And again, this is something we could use year over year to implement the comp and class study as well as any negotiations. So we are able to slowly basically build that into the operating budget if needed. And it's a stabilization fund, so town meeting's vote is required for us to appropriate the funds from that account.
Perfect timing for this.
Second motion.
Okay, Mr. Mickelson, move the motion. Mr. O'Neill, second in the motion. All in favor? Oh, any other questions? No. All in favor? Aye. That one passes four-zero. Article Four, appropriation to the stabilization fund for long-term capital. We're appropriating the sum of five-hundred thousand to the surplus, from the surplus revenue for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund for long-term capital as provided in the Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B.
This, yep, this is, a couple of years ago, the town created the stabilization fund for long-term capital. We actually withdrew five-hundred thousand recently for the project, the sprinkler project over at the schools. And so we're essentially just looking to replace that five-hundred thousand dollars. This would put that account balance back at a million.
This gives us mobility to do something that rather quickly if we need to. That's why it's there.
Uh, yeah, to start to, you know, save for these long-term projects.
But, but the funds are there to, so we don't, it's there to be used as opposed to not having it there.
Correct.
In case of emergencies usually in this?
Well, no, not necessarily emergencies. We have the reserve fund, which would be appropriated. This is something, because it's a stabilization fund, it would have to be approved at town meeting for us to utilize.
Right, right.
But first, as we start to look at some of these larger projects, the idea is to try to save, put away some more money.
Great.
And the sprinkler, that was a, not a long-term, but a capital improvement project. So we have funds that we can dip into when we need for these capital projects. Motion made by?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four-zero. Article number five, appropriation from Water Enterprise retained earnings for FY-25 deficit. Town will vote to transfer from retained earnings in the Water Enterprise Fund, the sum of one-hundred thousand, one-hundred-two-thousand-eight-hundred-twenty-three dollars to fund a prior year appropriation deficit in said enterprise fund. Tell us a little bit about that one.
Absolutely. So Articles Five and Six are both prior year deficit appropriations. These will be new to not only the board here, but also to town meeting. I'm not sure we've ever had anything like this in the town of Dartmouth. Going to be very frank with you here, we have some concerns financially at our Water, Water Enterprise Fund. The reality is, we, you know, enterprise funds are supposed to be self-sufficient. Their revenues cover their costs annually. That is not the case, what happened this past year. And so essentially, what we're having to do is dip into our savings account to cover the prior year operating budget. That is by one-hundred-and-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, which is that deficit. The Department of Revenue requires this to be done because we did go into a deficit. This would leave the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings at around one-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. To give you some history, over the past, maybe within five or six years, that was up over two million. So we are concerned. Our finance director, Gary Carrero and I, are already taking a hands-on approach with this, reviewing their budget for the current fiscal year every few weeks and, you know, making sure that this does not happen again. And like I said, a hands-on approach. We're not as concerned about Article Six, which is the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. That was really just budgeting, but we were off by four thousand dollars. That, that retained earnings account is still healthy, over nine-hundred thousand dollars. But we are, we are very concerned about the Water Enterprise.
What was the main reason for the deficit?
Water Enterprise was the amount of water we bought from the city of New Bedford. You know, to, to give, we've historically always bought water from the city of New Bedford. We have several wells that are down. We're in the process of getting those back up. But we, we purchased almost fifty percent of all of our water from the city of New Bedford last year. So we are, it's a top priority for our team and we are working through options to mitigate that. You know, Mr. O'Neill, as you know, with the potential interconnection with Fall River, we've had good meeting with Westport. We're looking to extend that over to Fall River soon. Unfortunately, that's not going to be an overnight fix. We're looking to schedule a meeting with the team over in New Bedford to see if there's some possible discussions there for how, what we're paying and our partnership with them. And like I said, really, we recognize this is a serious concern. This, this is not sustainable. Like I said, one-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars left in this retained earnings account is a concern.
This is after spending money on the Aqua Funds also.
Yes. And, yeah, it is. And so what you, what, you know, what you will see when we get to Article Seven, which is the capital plan, is we aren't able to fund any capital projects for the Water Enterprise Fund because we, there, there's nothing there. That money would come out of the retained earnings. We have about two-hundred-and-forty thousand right now, but we need to take, you know, approximately a hundred thousand to cover last year's deficit. So that leaves us one-hundred-and-forty thousand in, you know, retained earnings, which is basically your, you know, your savings account.
So again, at a high point, how much was it?
Over two million.
Right.
Right.
About six years, Gary, six years ago, five or six years ago, was over two million?
Retained earnings, yes.
Yes, yeah.
It's also concerning because I know every year they come before us, the Department of Public Works or the Board of Public Works, and they let us know what they're setting the, adding the percentage to. And we've had a bitter pill the last couple of years, looking at a nine percent increase. But this, clearly, there'll be a much larger increase going forward.
Ridiculous.
I, I can't necessarily predict that. What I can say is we are acutely aware of the concern here. We need to make sure that the operation can, you know, sustain and support itself. And so we will be looking at all measures to make sure that that is something that we can do going forward. But, you know, our real, our focus over this current fiscal year is to make sure that this does not happen again next year. And so, like I said, Gary and I are taking a hands-on approach. We'll be involved and we'll, if we have to make some difficult decisions during the fiscal year, whether that means spending freezes or whatever, you know, hiring freezes, whatever that may be, we will make sure that this does not happen again.
Any, any pushback for finance on that one?
I do, no, I do not believe so.
Hang on, Gary's coming to the mic.
It really, unfortunately, we have no choice. The, the Department of Revenue has, has required that we do this.
That money is spent.
Because the money, right, the money is spent.
Yeah, we have to reimburse it.
So, members of the board, Gary Carrero, Director of Finance, this goes back, I think, we look back at four or five years ago when there were zero rate increases to the, to the fund. And now we're seeing the, you know, what's happened. There's zero, there's zero dollars in the, in that account to, for any kind of retained earnings. So those were negative increases. And you've heard me speak of that over the few years that we've, yeah, it's great to have zero rate increase, but you're not building a balance as we do on the general fund side. So, as Cody mentioned, you did a great job explaining this, we are now looking at this monthly. And I'd have to say, over the last couple of months, it's trending positively. But we have to look at this and, you know, potentially make a decision in January, you know, where are we with this? Unfortunately, because they are enterprise funds and controlled by the DPW, the town side is kind of out of that whole mix. But both Cody and I are determined to make sure that we're part of that discussion, to make sure that they understand that, you know, the revenues need to, need to support their expenses going forward. I mean, you just can't continue to operate and we're going to, and the DOAs are telling us, you know, you've got to transfer money. We're lucky to have the amount of money that we had in that fund to do this, because otherwise we'd have to have permission from the Department of Revenue to go on the general fund side and take it out. And that's something that we don't want going forward.
That'd affect our credit too.
Mr. Tattelbaum.
May we suggest that we, this gets on our agenda probably on every month basis going forward so we can help make this, except?
If that's something the board would like, we certainly can. Like I said, I think Gary and I have a good handle on this.
You bring it to us at the right time.
We will make sure that the board is aware and everyone is aware. We, you know, what we don't want in the future, we're going to do everything we can to mitigate this, this does not happen again. But God forbid we are in this situation, we want to make sure that everyone is aware that this is coming down the road. And what can we do to make sure this doesn't happen again? So we have a good handle on it and if necessary, we will bring it forward whenever we need to.
Well, you're saying like in January, you'll have an, an idea?
Yeah, I think at least, at least for now, monthly updates. I think, I think it needs that kind of oversight. But then maybe even after we have that quarterly updates to the board and where we, where that fund stands, maybe even have the DPW present that. But I think that, you know, we need to monitor closely enough. And, and then we're able to be, react, can react to that in January if in fact it means, you know, a hiring freeze, expanding freeze or potentially a mid-year rate increase.
Thank you.
And that's your suggesting? That's not coming from the DPW?
No, that's only us looking at the, what happened in FY-25?
Well, the enterprise funds have built-in fiduciary responsibilities. They're handling funds given to them on, for the benefit of the ratepayer.
Correct.
So, you have a fiduciary responsibility, should be ahead of those issues. Not six months, but in my opinion, two years. So, thank you for staying on.
Thank you.
So do you want to recommend each one separately? Five and six?
So Article Five, someone to move it forward?
Motion to recommend.
Mr. Mickelson, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I mean, as he said, we have, we have no choice. We have to pay our bills, but we need to look at our bills closely. Article Six, appropriation from solid waste enterprise retained earnings for FY-25 deficit. Town will transfer from retained earnings in the solid waste enterprise fund, the sum of four-thousand-three-hundred-six dollars to fund prior year appropriation deficit in said enterprise fund.
Motion to recommend.
Okay, motion to recommend made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second with the same concerns.
Mr. O'Neill, we should put an asterisk. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Article Seven. Acceptance of Capital Planning Committee Report and Funding of FY-26 Capital Plan. To see if the town will vote to accept the Capital Planning Committee Report of capital needs for the FY-26, twenty-twenty-six, uh, fall annual town meeting and fund from the following. Three million, four-hundred-sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-three dollars from surplus, surplus revenue, five thousand from DCTV retained earnings, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from sewer retained earnings and five-hundred-forty-thousand dollars from solid waste enterprise earnings. So I'm going to go down and read, and if you want to discuss something, I just say hold and we'll come back to it. So Dartmouth Public Schools, we can see security upgrades, flooring replacement project, technology and hardware playground improvements for a total of six-hundred-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Dartmouth Police Department includes four marked police cruiser, police cruisers replacement and eighty firearms for a total of three-hundred-sixty-three-thousand dollars, nine-thousand-nine-hundred-eighteen dollars. DPW Administration Division, this is for the DPW Asset Management Program, Cross Road Phase Two Design Efficiency Study, GAP Grant Match Funding for a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Hold.
Okay. DPW Division, Highway Division, Freight Liner, twenty-eight-thousand-GVW Plow Truck Replacement and a thirty-four-thousand-four-hundred-GVW Dump Truck with Plow and Sander Replacement for a total of four-hundred-sixty-six-thousand dollars. DPW Engineering Division Pickup Truck Replacement, total of forty-five-thousand dollars. Okay, so let's go back up to the DPW Administration Division. There was a DPW Asset Management Program for a hundred thousand dollars. The Cross Road Phase Two Design, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The Efficiency Study, sixty thousand dollars. And the GAP Grant Match Funding for forty thousand dollars. Your question, Chris?
The questions are, for me, finance committee looked at these and approved them?
No, the finance committee has not approved them. Capital Improvement, CIPC has, this is their recommendation. They have vetted it. They've met a couple of times. They met last week for four, almost four hours, met with all the department heads, reviewed all of their requests, and this is their recommendation. I will note, we are, with all of the recommended appropriations from free cash, this would leave approximately leave approximately $3 million remaining for us to potentially appropriate in the spring. So this is just what they're recommending now, and if there is a need for additional capital items in the spring, that would allow us some flexibility for our future appropriations.
Okay, I just, there are a few things in here. The efficiency study from the DPW, I thought that was 30,000. I don't know why we're at 60. And there was a question whether they were going to spend the money to go out to additional communities to do a comparison. I thought they had agreed not to do that. I just have a lot of questions on these. The pickup truck for '25, is there a trade-in? Do we, are we holding on to the other, the other vehicle?
We have done for, so I can answer the pickup truck. What we have done is a number of vehicles have been, we finally started last year doing surplus auctions, and so a number of our older vehicles have been traded in. Once, going back a number of years, when Tim Barber was promoted to Director, we previously had four engineers, and it's been some time since we actually filled that. So as we work to actually fill that last spot, we are lacking a truck right now because it had been disposed of as it needed to be, and we just didn't replace it. So this is not a direct trade-in value?
Gotcha.
The efficiency study, this is the recommendation of the DPW Director in order to, he felt to encompass everything that we were looking for. I did provide him previously with the scope that I had developed with the assistance of the board, in that this is the estimate, approximate estimate that he got in order to adequately complete the full study with that full scope.
Capital planning, is that, is that, is that a capital planning item?
When they look for money, over $10,000?
Per their, Gary Carrow, per their, I'm not, per their guidance on their, on the committee's, it's over 10,000. But also keep in mind that they had the rate study. So part of it was the rate study that we funded, I think, last year, and now this is the efficiency study piece of that. And I think the board, if I remember correctly, was, went and agreed upon having an efficiency study for the, for the DPW. This was maybe some time ago. So this funds that. But the, the whole package was a rate and efficiency study. The rate study was done last year, and then the efficiency study.
Came back at more expensive, and then they didn't have enough funds to do efficiency, right?
Correct, right.
I guess, I guess generally, I, I just, I feel completely uncomfortable, you know, voting on these without having the police chief here to explain why four marked cruisers cost us $300,000.
I will tell you, the, at the CIP meeting, each of the department heads is there to discuss this. So this is putting our faith in CIP to be our ears in this process. I mean, I certainly understand, and should, at town meeting, a town meeting member, which all of these department heads are aware, should a town meeting member call hold and question them on any of those things?
It can be. So are these firearms, upgraded firearms?
Yeah, so, and I think, you know, I would suggest, you know, Gary, this is Gary and I's job, right? We are in charge of the community here, and we are acutely aware of these things, and we work with the department heads and CIP to make sure that these are, we understand these requests. So the cruisers, for instance, you know, we are, even with these four marked cruiser replacements, we're actually still down two cruisers. So this is going to replace two older cruisers, almost 150,000 miles, that are over 10 years old. But it's also going to replace two other cruisers that we've lost that have been totaled. And unfortunately, the value that we get from the insurance, it just isn't even close to be able to actually purchase a new cruiser. And this, this is just the going rate of a new cruiser in the build-out. You know, we approve at.
It's been, yeah, it's been quite some time since the police were complimenting with cruisers.
What about the firearms? I don't have the Finance Committee members here to say, ask them if they're comfortable. You two gentlemen are comfortable with these numbers?
Yes. Just so that, so that the board is comfortable with the process. We send out, I send a memo to the department heads prior to this process beginning, and they get back to me with all their capital requests. We then sup, we then supply those to CIPC, they review them. They go through all these requests. Now, keep in mind, there are, there are many more requests that come through, other than what you see here in the, in the article. But what we've done this year, too, to add, add a little bit to it, was we went through all the open articles that are out there and looked at what the departments had requested in prior years. Spend those articles down first, and then come back to CIPC, maybe in the spring, and ask for additional funds. But don't, don't come to CIPC and ask for additional funds when you haven't spent down last year's articles. So we're monitoring that closely, and I think that's part of the reason why you still see $3.1 million of free cash left in the spring to spend on anything that the town sees fit.
I just want to make sure that there's, there's been plenty of scrutiny on each and every one of these. Not to pick on the DPW, but those are, you know, those are pretty significant numbers.
I'd just like to add, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Tattelbaum.
This process, the same we do all the time. I think it doesn't help matters when we are faced with the DPW water shortage issue, and it does seem to have a little bit of a color on the rest of our proceedings here, because these cruiser replacement programs, et cetera, have been done on a regular basis. It goes through CIP, Gary oversees it, and it comes to us. It's not anything different, but it's tough to swallow when we go through the, through this water issue with DPW, there's no doubt about that.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
No, no problem. I'm going to continue with, on the next page, we have DPW Construction, and the total there is $196,000. Parks and Recreation, for a total of $836,025. General Government, for a total of $475,000. Sewer Enterprise. So those were all from surplus earnings, okay? Now we're getting into enterprise funds. So from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, a total of $725,000. DPW Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, a total of $540,000. And in DCTV, from their retained earnings, a total of $5,000.
So can I get clarification on, on a couple of these?
Absolutely.
The Allen Street Garage repairs, what does that entail?
Yes, so the Allen Street Garage, this has been an appropriation at two prior town meetings, actually. In the reality of it is, we have not been able to over, continue with the construction with the funds that we have. And so it's a priority that this gets done. It essentially, you know, if you're familiar with the Allen Street Garage, you have that main garage in the middle, and you'll, if you're looking at the building, all the garages on the left side. The left side would basically be completely rebuilt. The garage space there now isn't high enough for a lot of our equipment, so we're actually not even able to put it inside. So this would raise that and completely redo that. We have.
So those are overruns? Those are design changes or anything like that?
No, this is just, it just has come in a lot more than we, it is an overrun, it effectively is. We initially were planning around $500,000 for this project, and the last time this was bid out was the end of 2022, and it was around $650,000 approximately. And this just, this needs to get done. So in speaking with the Recreation, Parks and Recreation Director, in priorities, it's something we need to do. It's an investment in our equipment, and the cost is only going to continue to increase, so.
You're going to turn the investment word on me? I knew you'd do it. And the, and the gate also, they do have a gate?
The gate is to actually motorize, or I guess motorize would be the word, to put it there. It would allow for, to add equipment that makes an automatic gate, because what we're getting is after hours, if people are going down there, we've had some police calls down there. So this would, it's basically a remote gate. We can set timers, so a certain time of the day the gate closes. We can control it remotely, you know, first responders will all have access to it. And it also, if someone were to, one of the concerns we've heard is, what if someone gets stuck down there? The gate will open still if you're trying to leave.
But no entrance.
No entrance.
You can come out, you can get out.
Which is nice, because it's posted what time the beach closes. So, and this, this prevents somebody having to go there physically doing.
The savings, you know, right now, if we send someone out over, you know, after hours, there's a minimum overtime requirement for payment.
I've had, I've had about three calls, trying to figure out how to get a gate to close without having to send somebody.
Corey, did you say the surplus is about $3 billion, the total, except for, from the service revenue?
Yes, it is. 3.4 million, approximately, Gary, that were.
The surplus revenue portion is about 3.4 million.
Spent, yes. Remaining 3.1.
Thank you. Okay. General Government, I think.
Did you have any others, Chris?
No, no, sorry, go, go ahead.
Anyone else, questions?
I'll sit here.
All right, what's the board's pleasure moving this forward?
Motion to recommend.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by? Mr. Tattelbaum. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0. That does not say that it's not going to come up for conversation.
For sure.
At, and again, we need to make sure that every department head who will answer those questions will be able and prepared to answer them.
Get the kitchen remodel done, though.
Yes, we, finally, finally. Article Eight, appropriation for Dartmouth High School Roof Feasibility Study, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $250,000 from surplus revenue to be expended under the direction of the school committee for a high school roof replacement feasibility study at 555 Bakersville Road. The town may be eligible for a grant through the Mass School Building Authority. The MSBA Grant Program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by MSBA, and any costs the town incurs in connection with the feasibility study in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. Cody, could you explain that?
Yeah, so typically, this is something that would be funded under the capital article, which you just recommended. But where this is, we are shooting for funding under the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program, which Mr. Kylie mentioned tonight. This is the language that's required, has to be done through a separate article. But this would essentially appropriate $250,000 for them to conduct the feasibility study. It is a requirement of the MSBA program, if they accept us, that we do this. The MSBA is meeting on October 29th for them to consider projects, and we hope to know then. As you know, that is approximately a week after our town meeting. So we wanted to take a proactive approach here, basically bring this article forward. That way there, if, as long as town meeting does approve this, and, and fingers crossed the MSBA, you know, approves it as well, we can jump right into it, and we're not waiting until June to start our first step in the process.
Thank you. Anyone to move this forward, or any other questions?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. All right, the next one.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Based on the feedback we've received, I vote, I might make a motion, we drop this article from the town meeting.
Okay, Article Nine is the Charter Amendment for the Board of Assessors. Now, as you may remember, we had talked about moving all three-member boards to five. This board was approached and had sent, you'll have a pack, a letter in your package, that the assessors feel that they are fine with their three members. It is not a group that we have heard has had open meeting law violations. So as Mr. Tattelbaum just put on the floor, is to remove this article. It is not in support, the Board of Assessors does not currently support it.
Need a second for that?
Second.
Is there a second? There is a second. All in favor to remove Article Nine?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So removing Article Nine, I'm going to call them by their, their same article numbers, and they will be renumbered after the meeting. Okay, Article Ten.
Ms. Brooks?
Let me just read it. Charter Amendment, Board of Health Membership.
Based on the same feedback, I think we've received, I make a motion that we eliminate Article Ten from the town.
Okay. And as I said before, we did get Board of Health, the current Board of Health makeup seems to be working. We have no outstanding violations. We have a motion and a second to remove the, this charter amendment, Article Ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have removed Nine and Ten. Again, going in the same order, Article Eleven, Charter Amendment, Board of Public Works. To see if the town will vote to submit to the voters, the town for approval, the following amendment to the charter, which shall take effect on July 1st, 2026. Board of Public Works, the second and third sentences of Section 4-5A shall be deleted and replaced with the following. There shall be a Board of Public Works, which shall consist of five persons appointed by the Select Board, for terms of three years each. The terms of office shall be so arranged that as nearly an equal number of terms of office of members is, as, as is possible, shall expire each year. This, on this particular one, this is a board that is in support of expanding their membership, and is a board that has had, by the nature of their Board of Three, has experienced on occasion an open meeting law violation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Neil, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will keep Article Eleven, it will be renumbered. Article Twelve, Charter Amendment, Section 6-5 Rules and Regulations. To see if the town will vote to submit to the voters of the town for approval, the following amendment to the town charter, and which shall take effect on July 1st, 2026. Delete Section 6-5 and replace it with the following. A copy of all rules and regulations that are adopted by any town agency shall be filed in the office of the town clerk. Any rule, regulation, or amendment thereof shall become effective on either January 1st or July 1st. That occurs once a 90-day period has passed from the time of the town agency has filed with the office of the town clerk. The town clerk shall publicly post any rule and regulation filed with the office. The office of the town clerk shall also share a copy of any findings with the Select Board.
Filings.
Filings.
Filings, sorry, with the Select Board. Attested copies shall also be kept available in the public libraries. In the case where a town agency must enact rules and regulations with an effective date that does not align with July, January 1st or July 1st, a properly advertised public hearing must be held by the Select Board.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Neil, seconded by Mr. McDonough, Mr., sorry, Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Brooks, you want some help reading?
We'll keep going, I'm good. Article Thirteen, General Bylaw Amendment, Chapter Nine, Dartmouth Council on Aging. This came to us from Dartmouth Council on Aging, to see if the town will vote, and this is a bylaw amendment, let me go back before we start this bylaw amendment, because the charter amendments, which we have now just the two that we're sending forth, it says will take effect on July 1st. Both of these have to go.
Voters.
To the voters in April, but also have to go up to the Attorney General's Office.
So if approved at town meeting, they then go to the Attorney General's Office.
If found to be correct in wording.
Then they'll go to voters in April, and then it would become effective July 1st.
Okay. Do we need to state any of that here? That it has to go to the voters?
No, this is the same language that we use, and Council has advised in the past.
Okay.
One thing I do want to note is, we had previously, I had previously drafted language regarding the Zoning Board of Appeals. You'll notice that is not on this, on the warrant. The reason being, that is actually a zoning bylaw change, and given that it's a zoning bylaw change, we have statutory obligations for public hearings, for the Planning Board to hold that, and it's just not something that we are in a position to, to meet those obligations.
Move this quickly, okay.
So, you know, the Planning Board is actually hosting a public meeting tonight regarding some potential zoning changes. So if we were to do zoning changes at a spring town meeting, or even next October, that may be a good time to look at that, if the board so pleases, we're already looking at the zoning bylaw. But you won't, that's why it's not on here.
All right.
Because of the zoning change.
Okay. So are they aware, Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, that that's the process?
Is not aware, because it doesn't really affect them, and the Select Board had not made a decision yet.
Okay.
The Zoning Board of Appeals, I believe there should be their feedback in your packet as well, initially. And their take on it was really that. And their take on it was really that, as a group appointed by the Select Board, they felt either way was fine, and whatever the Select Board's pleasure was. But they do know we are going to hold off.
Okay. And I'll just say, while we're talking about ZBA, they're very busy right now, because we have these forty B projects. But it's really important that they have a full capacity of members, voting members, and they have their alternative alternates, which come to the meeting and listen to those, to the issues, so that they can jump in to make those decisions, so. All right, now, moving along now to Article thirteen, General Bylaw Amendment, Chapter nine, Dartmouth Council on Aging. This, again, was brought by the council to see if Dartmouth will vote, and you can see, I won't read the edited out, I'm going to read what it will say. Vote to amend the town's general bylaws as shown below. Deletions are shown in strikeout, and additions are shown in italics, and which shall take effect July first, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-six. Nine dash one, Establishment and Purpose. There hereby is established a Council on Aging Advisory Board of Directors under the provision of Chapter forty, Section eight B of general bylaws. Said Council on Aging Advisory Board shall be for the purpose of identifying the needs of the aging adults of enlisting the corporation, the cooperation, support, and participation of the town. Community members, organizations, public and private agencies work in the field of elder affairs and other groups, and individuals in the interest of aging adults of planning, promoting, supporting, implementing, and coordinating services for the benefits of aging adults, and to provide a forum for the exchange of ideas and information on subjects which are interest to aging adults. The Council on Aging Advisory Board shall serve in a non-governing, governing capacity, and shall make recommendations as to any required or needed changes in local services. It goes on, next page. Here you'll see under nine dash two, Membership Recommendations for Appointment Compensation. It adds, Advisory Board shall consist of nine residents of the town of Dartmouth. With respect to any vacancy on the Advisory Board, whether due to resignation, death, inability to act, or the expiration of a term, said Advisory Board shall receive all applications for the position, et cetera, et cetera. Moving down to B. The members of said Advisory Board shall include at least one person of at least sixty-five years of age, shall be composed of at least fifty-one percent persons, fifty-five years of age or older. C. The Select Board may appoint honorary Advisory Board members to recognize faithful service of former Advisory Board members. Honorary members are non-voting members, and maintain lifetime Advisory Board status ex officio, unless rescinded by the Select Board. And D. The Select Board may appoint non-voting associate members. Nine dash three, you will see that they have added Council on Aging Advisory Board to serve for a period of three years, three members of said Advisory Board to serve for a member of two years, and three members of the, to serve for a period of one year. As the term of office of each expires, his/her successor shall be appointed to a term of three years. That's how they're going to rotate it going forward. No changes to the verbiage in nine dash four, vacancy.
My God.
Could you read that again?
Motion, motion to, motion, what am I doing here? Motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend. Seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor?
Could you resist it?
Aye.
I want to know who wrote that. I want to shake their hand.
But it's a tongue twister. Article fourteen, which again will be re-numbered, Personnel Bylaw Amendment, New Position. To see if the town will vote to amend pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one, Chapter, and Chapter forty-one, Section one hundred and eight A and one hundred and eight C, the Dartmouth Personnel Bylaw, Section nine. By amending Schedule A, Administrative and Supervisory Group, to add the following position, title. Substance Use Program Coordinator, Compensation Grade or Schedule, grade seven. Twenty-nine dollars, forty, twenty-eight dollars, forty-nine cents per hour to thirty-seven point fourteen cents per hour. That was a new position that we put in to play last, last year.
But we had funds for it, didn't we?
And we still do.
Right. Okay, so a motion to recommend.
Motion recommended by, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article fifteen, Appropriation from CDBG Program Income revolving from, for community development activities. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from the CDBG Program Income revolving account for the special purpose of community development activities, including but not limited to consulting, grant technical assistance, grant matching, planning studies, affordable housing initiatives, or program administration. Cody, would you tell us a little bit more about that article?
Very good. Yeah, so the town historically took part in the Community Development Block Grant Program. That ended around two thousand and ten. It was replaced by the Community Preservation Act-funded Housing Rehab Program, which I'm sure you've heard about. So prior to that, it was funded through the Community Development Block Grant. When we withdrew from that, there were still several program, or several homes that had existing funding under this program. Over the years, as those loans effectively have been paid off, that becomes the program income. And as part of their program closeout, we keep those funds. And so this basically moves a hundred thousand dollars of those remaining funds to community development activities. We've done this previously, once or twice. Right now, the balance net account is approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So after this transfer, that would still leave around seventy. Assistant Town Administrator Chris Vitale had mentioned this previously when he gave an update on grants. This is an opportunity for us to utilize these funds for things like grant matches, technical assistance, so on and so forth. And once these funds are dried up, we may want to look at some sort of account for our grant matches. But it allows us to kind of react quickly when needed, rather than wait for a future appropriation, as long as it has to do with community development.
Very good.
Motion to recommend.
Motion. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Ms. O'Neil.
Good use of those funds.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bit of a tongue twister again. All right, and our final article is Article sixteen, Increase of Elderly Tax Exemption. To see if the town will vote to increase the real property tax exemption allowed for certain senior citizens under Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one C, from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars.
I would gladly like to recommend.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, question, Ms. O'Neil.
What's the overall cost? How many, do we know how many exemptions are in this category?
Finance Director Gary Crowe should be able to provide that information.
Gary?
He's pulling it up.
He's pulling it up. Give him one second. So while we're waiting for that, I will just let everyone know that this is Article sixteen. In the re-numeration, it will be Article fourteen. So we're taking out two articles, and going to town, October town meeting with fourteen articles total.
Aye.
To fill the time, I will not sing.
Talk amongst yourselves.
You can all thank me for that.
Gary told me about that.
My husband will tell you I can hum, but I can't sing. All right.
So this number, this number obviously fluctuates as people come on and off the program. But currently, there are ninety residents receiving the elderly exemption. And going from five hundred to a thousand, the current exemption amount was forty-five thousand. That would go up to about ninety thousand, so. So the impact on the budget would be ninety thousand, which comes out of the overlay account.
Gary, do you have the current balance in the overlay?
Uh, it's one point nine million.
Motion to approve.
Really? Thank you very much. I second that.
Second that. All right. That's, that's good to know, and I think we have ninety residents who will be very happy. All in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. All right.
Now, if you just want to vote to approve the warrant as, as amended tonight, because that was your technical, your article recommendations.
Did I step ahead?
No, no.
Okay. All right, so we have a, to, a, I am looking for a motion on the floor to accept the warrant with its
Removals.
Removals edits, which as I said, brings it down to fourteen articles from the sixteen.
Motion made.
Motion made by Mr.
Second.
O'Neil, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to bring that around to be signed. All right. Next, Article, Business Letter F, Licensing Agreement for four sixty-one and four ninety-one, Fontz Connor Road. Tell us a little bit about that.
This has been on the agenda several times. The property owner has been in with his engineer. At your last meeting, I had provided you the feedback from DPW and, um, DPW, as well as town council's opinion. Based on that, the board requested that we draft a revocable licensing agreement. So I've gone forward and drafted that agreement. Council has reviewed this, the most recent version, I did email to you this afternoon, because there were a few changes based on council's feedback. However, this, based on what the board has tasked us with, I think this, this should accomplish what you're looking for.
Make a motion, send the license agreement from council of administration to the proponent for review and adoption, if, if so desired.
What was that?
He wants to recommend that we go along with the
Chris is recommending that we adopt and send this to the petitioner?
To the proponent for review and adoption.
Proponent for view and adoption.
Okay, we haven't voted on, we haven't voted on to accept it as it is, yet.
Well, that's the question right now.
Well, that's what he's, that's what he's
Oh, he's adding, that we send it, accept it, and then send it to them?
Yes. Yes, that is, Chris, could you say your motion?
Make a motion that we accept the revocable, um, revocable license agreement and have it forwarded to the proponent for review and adoption, if need, if need be.
There is one, sorry, Madam Chair, there is one, Section four, we left empty. It is a license fee. This is something the board would need to determine if you want to charge a fee or not. And I can fill that in, but it's a, it's a policy decision, so we left it empty.
Oh, okay, so first we have to, well, let's see if we want to do this, and then we will
I got a question.
So we're not, we're only going to, because of that, we're not going to say and send it, we're just accepting.
So I have a question.
Hang on, we need a second on the motion first, before we discuss.
Right. So do we have a second on the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Tattelbaum has seconded the motion, so now?
So are there, is there any, oh, yeah, on the, the fees, if there are any fees for this? Do we have, have we done this before?
We have not done this before.
No, and that's the information that we received for our September eighth, um, meeting. We had a letter from Attorney Savistano stating that he did not recommend us doing this. And we, it would be the first time to do it, and may set precedence. And we had a letter from, not in favor of, of doing this, from Mr. Barber. But at that meeting, the board voted to task Mr. Hadad from, for working with Mr. Attorney Savistano to create the revocable
Even though he doesn't recommend it.
Correct.
Yes.
He still does not, but we tasked him with a job.
Correct.
So, so my understanding that what the, what this ends up doing is, A, it satisfies the DPW, it satisfies the building department.
We don't know that it satisfies the building department, they have not weighed in.
The only thing that this does is provides the board's approval to put a sign on town property. This does not exempt from any other local permitting. So essentially, if the board were to approve this, they then would apply for a signed permit with the building department. You can follow that process.
Okay, let me regroup then. I just want to be sure, the, the DPW, they've approved that, our town council has approved that our protection, that it can be revoked if we want to. And legally, the town council is saying we are protected, based on the fact we've never done this before.
In the letter we received on September eighth, for our September eighth meeting, Tim Barber was not in favor.
Right, right.
And Anthony was not in favor.
Mm-hmm. No, I understand, but
No, but you just said that they weren't
No, no, but this, this, okay. This agreement says that the, as long as the DPW was satisfied with those small restrictions, and they would go along with it. Is that correct?
It doesn't necessarily mean they're in favor of it. It, it basically says that as long as they meet the requirements, which was primarily the ten-foot setback from the water main, then, then it's acceptable.
Okay, so they're acceptable, or whatever.
Under those conditions.
So the DGW put in their restrictions, and they, it's been, it's in here. The building department has to look at it before they approve it, as they would any situation. And town council is saying to us that we are, that based on this new language, we are protected, and it's revocable, even though it's a, this is a once, this has never happened before.
The message I got from town council was, he did what was requested of him.
Yep.
He is not in favor of this.
Even after writing this?
Right.
So I, so I drafted this at the request of the board.
Gotcha.
And had our council review it, you know, to make sure we are insulated legally. So we have provided you a document that accomplishes what you are requesting, and legally protects the town.
And we can, can revoke this at any time for, for absolutely no reason.
It is revocable, it is a revocable agreement, correct.
So even with this language, town council is against it?
Yes.
And did he say why?
He, he has concerns that it would conflict with the zoning bylaw.
Oh.
And the zoning bylaw can be, can be basically trumped with the authority of the, of the Select Board in this situation, because
Trumped, that's a good word.
Because it's
Change your language.
It's an unprecedented situation. I mean, there is no area out there that, that causes this kind of hardship for
And they maintain, they maintain the maintenance
They have to ma, yeah, if you read, if you read it, it's, it's exactly what Anthony wanted to put in the letter.
Yep. I don't see how the town could be in jeopardy if, if we were to approve this because of the language. I mean, who knows? Again, like Anthony said, we've never done this before, so we don't have anything to fall back on.
You're breaking new ground.
So this is a benefit to the tenants that were in there now. Because they have no sign. And we have to break precedent to help, if it would have, and the town be protected, to put the sign in so they can have some identification on the road. So we're really doing it for the tenants, which they deserve. But, and as best we can be, we're protected, although town council is, is skeptical. Does that, does that say it's true?
I think you've captioned.
So, so wait a minute, I'm just more concerned now about the, the charges, if any. If we accept this, we have to put a, a value on the, on the charges. After we accept it, a
You do not need to, no. That is an option within the agreement.
But I would imagine they would like to know if we're going to charge them, how much they'd pay.
You would have, if you were, if you wanted to charge them, you would have to determine that within this agreement. You do not have to charge them, it's a policy decision of the board.
But, but I think we need to come up with a number also.
But the next piece that they would do, one second, the next piece after this, if the, if, if the proponent accepts this, they then have to apply for the signage license.
Just the building permit.
The building permit, and there is a charge for that.
Yeah, just, yeah, just like
Yeah, so there's, there's another fee.
Right.
So
Mr. O'Neil, in our quest to try to help out a, a worthy retailer, who's really a victim of circumstance here now, they have no sign identification. We're trying to do it, but we are, it's not clean and easy. We do have a little bit of vulnerability, and we're actually going against the advice of town council.
Yeah, I, I think probably Yeah, I, I think probably the most, when it comes to that, David, the, the most important piece of the agreement is, whereas the licensee acknowledges that the signs must comply with all applicable town bylaws, including but not limited to the town of Dartmouth sign bylaw as codified in the town code, which generally prohibits signs within public rights of way without specific authorization in all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. So it's basically saying that this particular area will still have to apply to the bylaw, and this license is giving them specific authorization from the owner of that land, which is the town.
So if this little piece comes up again on Fons Corner Road down the street, we'd have to probably approve it because we've done it this time.
What little piece?
This little piece of land, on this awkward situation, it's.
So you're saying, right, so anytime someone else that builds doesn't have frontage, which is their issue, and needs to put a line, a sign, would like to put a sign on Dartmouth Town property, they would have to do.
We would have to okay it.
We'd have to okay it, just like we would do.
We've also done it before, so it does somewhat set a precedent, but.
Yes.
What do we do? Yeah, I mean, meaning this, yeah.
I, I think you'd be fi- you'd be hard pressed to find another scenario.
Certainly I can stand that.
Never known in this town.
I, 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 look, this thing's been beaten to death.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend a, a yearly charge.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think it's important to have some fee on here for, just to basically enact the agreement.
Yep.
I recommend a dollar, because.
No, I recommend a little more than that.
Let me, let me explain why. Because you've got buildings out there, you've got tenants out there that are spending a lot of money, it's an unusual circumstance because of the layout of the, the right-of-way. And you're doing, you know, the, the cost to install these signs, from what I understand, is around thirty thousand dollars each. So it's not, you know, it's costing the, the proponent quite a bit of money for assistance of the tenants.
This is a, this is a policy change, and you're lucky enough to make a decision. It's, it's, it's really black and white policy cha- uh, policy decision.
Yep, this is a policy decision of the board, you tasked me to draft the agreement, and I've given you a, a vehicle to do what you requested.
There are, how many signs now?
Just two.
Two signs.
So it's gonna clean up the other ones that are out there that are further back, clean, and clean those up.
They're gonna take those out.
Get them on to, yeah.
So I recommend a hundred dollars each per, per sign, per year.
We haven't decided whether to do it or not.
But I want to add that to the, to this, so at some point.
Where do you end up on the fees for?
Because I just think there should be a fee involved.
Right now, we don't charge a fee per year, right? It's not, I mean.
We don't really have any other examples of this where we can compare to.
Per year, you wanna do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, what's wrong with that?
I think he put it in there because it's basically renumeration and consideration for a license agreement.
I would put a hundred dollars per, per sign, per year, two hundred dollars total.
So I, I'll amend the motion to approve it with the two hundred dollar fee, have this sent, approved by the board, sent to the proponent, because we're, we're still not. You know, this, this I don't believe has been forwarded to the proponent.
Has not.
For their review, so it, it might be a moot point.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see anything in here that really goes against what they were looking for. They'll have to remove it if need be required by the DPW. If there's change in the right-of-way out there, and we ask that it be removed, they have to pay to remove it, they have to pay to, to maintain it, they're paying a nominal fee in order for the license to be active, and it, it's met the DPW requirement of ten feet from the utility line, and although town council may not, you know, think this is important, in his opinion, he does state that we have the specific authority to allow this in this very unique situation.
Okay, so on the floor, we have a recommendation to accept this with an amended fee schedule as.
If Stanley wants a hundred per sign, that's fine.
Per sign?
I'm sure that'd be fine.
On an annual basis?
One hundred dollars per sign.
Each, per sign annually. Do we have a second?
Second.
Stan has seconded it.
So we're doing this for the tenants, and we, and we see, and we are, we seem what will be somewhat protected because of the language of the agreement.
I hope so.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, apparently.
So.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All opposed? Yes, so this goes forth three to one.
So I have made that amendment here, and I will print it, so if the board could just hang out for a second afterwards, so I can give it to you to sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
You're against it because?
Because of the concerns that Tim Barber raised and our own council.
Okay.
So I don't often feel that when an attorney tells you, you should.
I, I share that.
Pretend that you know more than the attorney.
I share that concern.
Uh, 'cause I don't. All right, next, we have authority to file, so if you would turn to page fifty-nine in our, let me just make sure I'm correct here, fifty, yes, fifty-nine in your, in our packet, whereas the town of Dartmouth, after thorough investigation, has determined that the work activity consisting of, and this is Dartmouth stormwater and wastewater assess, asset management plan. So Cody's gonna tell us a little bit amount, about that, but the AMP financing documents is asset management plan financing documents.
Yeah, so this directly correlates with one of the items that you just recommended on the capital improvement plan. We have been awarded a grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the stormwater and wastewater asset management plan. Our, our contribution is a hundred thousand dollars, we anticipate some of that being in-kind services, but that's why you'll notice on the capital plan, it's a hundred thousand, and we're getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. This specific grant requires that the select board actually take a vote to authorize me in my capacity as town administrator to sign off on the grant and all of the documents that have to do with the grant. So that's essentially what this is, it's the board approving that I have the authority to act on behalf of the town, its agents, in filing this application, executing any agreements, and performing any other actions to secure the application for grants between, with the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust.
Motion made by Mr. O'Neill, seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That one's gonna pass, three, zero. Mr. Mickelson was in the room at the time?
That's all right, I'm sure it would pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
This isn't applied at exemption.
All right, next, we have town administrators update.
Yes, it's been a very busy few weeks here in the town. To provide an update on the compensation and classification study, all of those interviews with staff are finishing up, and they will be complete this week, so moving along as expected with that. So we anticipate having that project complete hopefully at the end of the year, if not early January, so right on, right on target. To follow up on a previous agenda item, where there was a request for a joint meeting with the New Bedford City Council, the, we did get some information from Councilor Chiquet, and we, I requested some additional information, I felt like I wanted to make sure the board had additional facts rather than just information from an advocacy group. He did just send that along, so I'll be sharing that with the board, and we have also asked for potential dates for that joint meeting, so we just wanted to keep you aware that this is not falling by the wayside, we're just waiting to, to get that information back.
Should we consider after the reelection?
Um, yeah, potentially, I mean, I think that, I would anticipate that's what they'll come back with, but I think any opportunity we can get would be a good opportunity, so I will keep you informed.
Well, in a few weeks.
Yeah, so.
Shouldn't matter.
Preliminary's next week.
Yeah.
Wanted to provide you an update on the old police department, there was a, a letter of correspondence included in your packet, we have been issued an enforcement order by the fire chief for not having an active alarm system down there, so we are in the process of getting that done, but just wanted to let the board know that is gonna cost us over eight thousand dollars to do. You know, we do have that grant application out for the, you know, the building study there, but this is something that, you know, we, we probably should be discussing sometime soon, how much money do we want to continue to invest in this building?
Right.
You know, we also are looking at, this will be a future agenda item, but, you know, the police department, the board had previously authorized the police department to utilize it for training. With that comes the need for valid fire extinguishers throughout the building, valid emergency exit signs, which we are getting an evaluation on right now, but if that is going to cost us significant money, my recommendation would be to, to cease the training, just, just keeping the board updated that no, no action needed tonight, this will likely be on a future agenda, but we've been working through that.
Considering the expenses that we might have to go through with that, I, I would suggest that we do not let anyone use that building anymore.
We will definitely.
Especially the condition of the building, as you all know.
We will have it on a future agenda, for sure. I wanted to follow back up, the board had previously authorized the Parks and Recreation Department to clean up the Joseph Davis Cemetery on Fons Corner Road. Let me pass around a picture here of the work that they completed, they did an excellent job completing that, we will likely do some landscaping in the spring, but if you drive by, kudos to them for doing such a, such a nice job.
It's in our packet as well, yeah.
Up there. Last week, myself, Chair Brooks, and Chris Vitale attended a nice event at UMass Dartmouth with the governor and several other members of the state delegation to kind of put into emphasis the significant investments that they're making at the UMass Dartmouth campus, that was a great event, we were able to attend. The Dartmouth Community Electricity Aggregation Program, which expires in November of this year, has been renewed, that'll be good through November of 2028, and we are seeing actually a decrease in the electricity rates there. So the current rate is fifteen.
I got the mail yesterday.
Yep, so residents should be getting notified. The current rate under the program is fifteen point seven eight four cents per kilowatt hour, and that'll actually go down to fourteen point three four six. So Kathy Stanley, our energy manager, does an excellent job with that program. Over the life of the program, the average Dartmouth resident has saved sixteen hundred dollars in their electric bill by being part of the electricity aggregation. We have our final long-range workshop meeting tomorrow night, six p.m. with the Southworth Library, that will be for DPW projects, so we're looking forward to that. On the seventeenth, I hosted a town administrator meet and greet breakfast at the Council on Aging, we had approximately fifty members of the Council on Aging attend, it was a great Q and A session that lasted for almost three hours, and it was a great opportunity to really dive in and get feedback from the community, and we will look to do this every six months because we thought it was a, a good event, and I appreciate the COA for hosting. At the last meeting, there was a follow-up on the request for stop signs at Franklin and Chestnut, I was, I did, I did confirm that that has been completed, DPW has installed those signs, and a final mention would be the planning board held a special meeting this evening, I believe they just ended, to discuss Dartmouth's future of zoning. That was their first in-person meeting in quite a while, and it was a special meeting just to focus on that zoning, so we look forward to working with them to figure out what they feel is the best opportunities for us in our zoning in the future.
Excellent.
That is it for now.
Excellent, thank you. All right, anything under Old Business?
So under proposed town projects, we'll have an updated sheet for you next week at the meeting. I'm really trying to work with our departments to develop a sheet that is conducive to getting the board the information that you're looking for, and not to burden some on them, so I think we've narrowed that down, so I will have that for you then. Forty B update, it, just that we had another public hearing last Thursday, where both the project on Old Westport Road and Tucker Road were discussed, traffic was discussed, primarily on Tucker Road, and then more of an in-depth review of the project on Old Westport Road was reviewed. We will have, the next public hearings will be held October twenty-third, that is for the project on Tucker Road, and October thirtieth is for the project on Old Westport Road. And as a note, those will be back here at Town Hall. Since we will be dividing them up, we feel comfortable having the meetings back here at Town Hall. I have no new updates on Bliss Corner, Lake Nook, or municipal broadband.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our minutes, our minutes of September eighth, start on page sixty-one. I will say I reviewed them and thought that they captured that meeting appropriately. Anyone have any other?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Tattlebaum, seconded by Mr. O'Neill, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, select board updates, Mr. O'Neill.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, this one is more of a ask through you to Cody about animal control, wondering if we can have the animal control officer in to discuss the issue that we've been back and forth with. We had a couple of deer that were killed on one property, and I had some, Cody had some calls made back and forth with police and animal control, and it was, the hours of operation came into play, I think, for a little while. This has happened to me a couple of times, where people have called, and the deer are actually on private property, they're not in the right-of-way, so I'm just, I, I wanted to ask if the animal control officer has, and you may even have this information, if the animal control officer has a protocol to remove the deer from private property, because these people were elderly, and they had actually two good-sized deer on their, on their property.
Shoot them.
So the police did go out, I'm not sure if the animal control officer went out, but I think they had to have somebody private come and get them.
Wrestling deer.
If I'm not mistaken, so I just didn't know.
The deer were alive on their property?
They were both deceased, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, this is odd, very odd. So if we could, I, I just looking for a little bit of information on that. An update maybe next meeting on the water connection in Fall River, we should have hopefully a little bit of information back on that. The Recreation Department, I had asked Cody to reach out to the Recreation Department on setting up maybe a concert or two in the North End Park at some point versus just upon a ganset, and I didn't know if the Recreation Board had looked into that yet, I'm curious if, if they have, and what the results were. And then, I'm considering a restriction at some point on the use of solid metal shipping containers in town. I just want to let my fellow board members know on residentially zoned parcels, I'm seeing just more and more of them, I've got a couple of friends that have one property with about four of them on there, so it's more of a commercial exposure that they have to look at in a residential area. So I'm gonna start some work on getting some opinion from, from the town about their feeling on a timeframe to remove shipping containers, allow, for a certain period of time, allow those on-site, and then at some point, convert those to sheds, and be, you know, and would have to adhere to the zoning bylaws. So just kind of a heads up on that one, and that's it.
Extensive, Mr. O'Neill.
Sorry.
No, good for you, I'm, I'm, please, I'm looking over these, and I know that we, I don't know where we stand with animal control, I know that Sandy had retired, I know that we kept her on, I don't know where we are with that.
We are still actively recruiting.
Okay, actively recruiting, so I, I have these down for, and I, Cody and I actually are meeting on Wednesday to talk about next, because our next meeting is already next week, so we'll see how many of these are on, but I certainly take all of these, great, great work, Chris.
Thank you for moving on the Franklin-Chestnut Street, that was quick.
That was, that wasn't me at all, that was all DPW and our safety officers, so kudos to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Briefly, just repeat, Cody had to see tomorrow night's long-range planning workshop, appreciate anyone can be there, it's about all our DPW projects. This is a question, I do realize that I walk a lot, and I see on a regular basis young fellows, young kids, mostly boys. fellows, young kids, mostly boys, running around in these scooters, no helmets on, sidewalks all over the place. Am I overstating the problem because I'm walking, or do we see it around town fairly often? Question.
I mean, I also see, and I'll be specific, on Elm Street, both scooters and bicycles and kids with no helmets. Now, it's entirely possible that they left their house with a helmet, and they ditched the helmet.
Electronic bikes are all over the place now.
But that is, that is problematic. I mean, it is something that I think I'm going to put down, potentially our safety officer.
I wouldn't put them on top of the list, but it frightens the hell out of me.
And I would think that for those of us that are driving by and seeing it, it frightens us, but I can tell you as a parent, you send them out with a, and you hope, and we're still a small town, because sometimes you do get a call that I saw your child without a helmet. So, but that's something, thank you, Dave, yes.
Let's talk to the chief about this.
The speed's incredible, incredible.
Let's get the chief, let's get the chief in.
Especially with those e-bikes.
Yep, yep.
I think there's also an age on those e-bikes, but it would be good as a community service.
I don't know what the rules are.
Yeah, the rules.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Mickelson?
Yeah, so I attended the Bristol County Advisory Board meeting, September 18th, 2025. Interesting amount of money transacted with this group, but the most, most interesting to me was the motion to approve Bristol County Agricultural High School budget for fiscal year 2026 at the amount of $20,586.05 and $0.76, and millions of dollars of either money that came in and money that went out. If anybody's interested, I have an official fiscal year 2026 budget estimates for the Bristol County and all the transactions for that night.
Thank you for your attendance and that, and your detail, and that is very interesting, the $20 million that is put towards Bristol County High School.
They had more than a quarter.
They did, yeah.
Yep. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your work on that.
If you're interested, I'll get it over to you.
All right. For me, I would just like to say that we do have the meeting...
Wait a minute.
Oops, sorry, nope.
I'm so excited about Bristol County.
Oh, yes, that's right, your signs.
So, I want to, once again...
Come get close to the mics so we hear you.
Once again, our beautiful town of Dartmouth is being inundated with this baloney, signs everywhere, on our telephone poles, on our trees, yard signs like this that are everywhere. Please, if you want to, if you want to go anywhere and put them up, but don't come to this town and put them on our, on our, on our property. So we are pulling them down as fast as you put them up. So I know what you pay for these things, I buy them by the hundreds, and we don't want them, so do me a favor, stay the hell out.
Thank you, Mr. Mickelson, and we've said it before, and he will say it again. We're also looking at those signs that are put up on backs of trucks and put up high on our...
Utility poles.
Utility poles. We're trying to figure out a way to get those down as well, so...
Stanley, the phones are ringing off the hook.
Yeah, gutter cleaning, gutter cleaning.
Yeah, good.
As Mr., as everyone has said, tomorrow night, we're going to be talking about the long-term plan and what's needed at our DPW. So I encourage everyone, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, to come out to Southworth Library. Also, it's getting darker earlier, please make sure you watch out for not only those kiddos on their bikes and scooters without helmets, but also wearing dark clothing as it's, the night is creeping up.
The mornings are dark.
And the mornings are dark as well. This is that, the time where seasonal depressive disorder comes about, so watch yourselves. Also, it's fall, so keep in mind that there are lots of high school sports. Those of you in listening distance can hear the band perform every afternoon or evening. Please come out and see them, look on the town website and find out when the Dartmouth, at the Dartmouth Public School website, and find out when they're performing. We are back again next week.
Well, we...
See you then.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Bye-bye.